Phil? Could I get you to connect this thing again? Good evening. The time is 5:04 PM and the Warwick City Finance Committee is now in session. If I may have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes from February 23rd.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bid number one. Found on page one. 2022-317 Neptune Cold Water Meters. Director Di Petrillo, how are you, sir?
Good evening. The Water Division went out to bid for a two-year contract. We received one bid. The amount of the award is $300,000. The current bid expires on March 26, 2022. The new contract period would be March 27, 2022 to March 26, 2024. And I apologize, the Water Division did not abide by the 90-day ordinance to get this in. 60 days, and I'm going to own that. We've gone through a period of some turnover procurement. With that being said, again, I apologize that the Water Division didn't abide by that ordinance.
No, I'm sorry. With that being said, repeat that last part.
We apologize and it will not happen again.
Oh, okay. No, I'm so sorry. No worries. Thank you so much. No. Councilman Gebhardt.
Hi, Director. Did the timing of this one at all impact who bid?
Oh, no, not at all. So we have Neptune meters in our system. So it's sometimes, it's kind of difficult for other companies if they're not solely Neptune dealer. They typically don't bid on this. Our standardized equipment isn't Neptune meter. The timing had no effect on that whatsoever.
Okay. And then I did not have the time to compare this against the last time this one came up. But any, what are you seeing in terms of increases from contract year to contract year, substantial, minimal?
So last year, we went out for a one-year bid. Historically, we've always done a two-year bid. So the year before last, we had a two-year bid and my predecessor was granted a one-year extension. We thought it would be better to go back to a two-year bid with the supply and demand.
Yeah.
You know, get this locked in for a couple of years.
But the pricing between last year and this year?
Yeah, the pricing, it went up nominally. It wasn't too bad. Not much at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Chairman. Trevor, is this the same company that we used last year?
That's correct.
Okay. And you have... Well, you stated that the prices that we see here on these documents, which are all itemized, those are all our net costs per unit?
That's correct.
And you said that the prices have gone up nominally, I believe?
Yeah, well, yeah. As you see, there's many different items on there. Some items stayed the same, some items went up a little bit.
What was the highest percentage of an item that went up?
I couldn't tell you that right now.
Because I know the cost of materials have gone up significantly, so I was curious to know how they're treating us. But you say it's just minimal price increase on some items?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any comments or questions from other members of the council? Comments, questions from members of the public. Comments, questions from members of the public. Oh, Councilman Gebhardt.
Thank you, Chair. Are these, do you know if these are the same meters that Kent County uses?
Oh, I believe that... Yeah, Kent County just had a switch out, so I'm not sure, Councilman, what meters they're using now.
Okay. All right, got it. Thank you. That was more informational, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none. We will now move into the rest of the bid docket. I will start with the members of the committee for any items they wish to pull to discuss of the bid docket. I will then go to members of the council. I will then ask members of the public. To members of the committee, I would like to start with bid 2021-283-Alpha and Bravo. That's bid item seven. Are there any other items from members of the committee that you would like pulled from the bid docket for discussion? Are there any items from the bid docket, members of the council? We're just going to wait to see if Councilman McElroy normally can. Go ahead, Councilman Lattisor.
That's all right, Chairman. No problem. Item number six, 2022-345 Commercial Heating, I'm sorry, Repair to Boiler at Holden. Item 2022-270C. Found on page 44. Original equipment, manufacturer's pots. And item 2022-356 Five-Year Rate Study.
So just so I can verify, Councilman, I believe I missed one because I was just reviewing the notes. You were requested bid 2022-345 Repair Boiler at Holden?
Correct.
You requested 2022-356 Five-Year Rate Study?
Correct.
And was there another one?
Yes.
Thank you.
2022-270 Charles. Original equipment, manufacturer's pots.
Thank you so much. Is there any item from the bid package any other members of the council would like to discuss? Are there any items from the bid package members of the public would like to discuss? Are there any items from the bid package members of the public would like to discuss? Hearing none. It'll make sense to go in order. So we will start at bid 2022-345 Commercial Heating Services Repair to Boiler at Holden. Found on page 32. This is requested from Councilman Lattisor. Councilman Lattisor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hi, Kristi.
Good evening.
Kristi, in the second paragraph on your position paper, it says on Sunday, January 16, 2022, it was reported that the heat, reported by whom?
One of the department directors had gone into the building that day, for what I'm not sure. But he reported to building maintenance that the heat was not running.
And this building is still under the control of the school department?
No.
It's under our control?
Yes.
And it said the department called out to authorize vendors for assistance with the unit. However, it was unsuccessful. These vendors that we have contracts with, don't we have a clause in there that requires somebody for this type of issue to be on call 24/7?
This is kind of a unique issue just because of the boiler, the size of the boiler. It's old. I think it's probably original to the school. They did try to fix the problem. They changed some of the nozzles and stuff. But we had to call someone that is proficient with oil burners.
So does that mean that we don't have someone on call for this type of burner?
We've had issues previously with this boiler, but this issue that whatever happened to it, we were unable to get it fixed by the vendors we have on the bid. We had to call someone outside of. That's basically an expert, I guess.
Yeah, I understand that, but the initial call would have been made because we didn't have heat in the building. No one at that time had any clue why we didn't have heat. And my question is, don't we have an agreement with these service contractors, particularly for heat? We've seen it happen over here in the annexed building and other buildings where we have pipes freeze up. Don't we have a clause in our contracts with these people that someone is supposed to be on call 24/7 so we can pick up? You couldn't, nobody answered the phone for you. You're reaching out. You're recognized as a problem. You're reaching out. You're trying to get this problem corrected, but no one's answering the phone for you. Is there supposed to be someone there answering the phone?
Let me just clarify that sentence. It was not that they were unresponsive. They responded. They just couldn't fix the problem. So we had to call somebody and that was...
Well, this says that you were unsuccessful in reaching an authorized vendor. That's what it says. The department reached out to authorize vendors for assistance with the unit. However, it was unsuccessful.
It was unsuccessful. Their repair to it was unsuccessful. That's what I meant. I...
And then, so there was nobody available, is I guess the answer. You called the vendors who were supposed to be servicing our equipment and you couldn't get anybody. Not your fault, but you couldn't get anybody.
They could not fix the unit. That was the issue. That's why we had to call somebody else.
So when you called the vendor that is supposed to be servicing it, they in fact went there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not that our vendors are unresponsive to our calls when we need assistance. In this particular case, they just were not, they couldn't diagnose and figure out what the problem was with this unit.
Okay, so then it wasn't, in the way I read this thing, it says, "We reached out to authorize vendors for assistance with the unit. However, it was unsuccessful." What you meant by that was, or whoever put this up, they were unsuccessful in getting the vendor to fix it. It wasn't that you were unsuccessful with getting anybody to answer the phone?
Right.
Okay. Same thing with the school department. It said, "But the individuals that had knowledge of this unit were unavailable." So the school department doesn't have anyone on call to fix heating outages in the winter?
I can't really speak for what the school department does or doesn't do, but in this case, the building maintenance supervisor reached out to their maintenance supervisor, but there's two individuals that are familiar with this unit and they were both out for personal reasons.
So the school department doesn't provide a backup when two people are out for this type of repairs on a boiler and it's in the wintertime and we could have freezing temperatures, the school department doesn't have a backup to keep the pipes from freezing? And how many schools do we have? So because they got two people who's homesick, there's no backup from the school department to fix these pipes? But, I mean, not the pipes, but the heating system. And Kristi, I'm not directing this at you, per se. I know you've done your job in reaching out to these folks, but it's just bizarre to me that, oh, we have two people that fix it, but they're both out sick. So nobody else has been called. There's no subcontractors on call. There's no anyone else on call. So if we have a pipe freeze and burst because there's nobody there, that's going to be our problem. In this, hold on, I'm going to move this over because the light in here stinks tonight. You can't see what you're reading. It says on the heating service, commercial heating service, which is the vendor that, fortunately, you were able to get ahold of to get over there and take care of it. It says, "Description of work: Received emergency call from answering service for no heat at Randall Holden Building. Arrived and cleaned and adjusted the electrodes settings on the Whale McLean Oil Fired Hot Water Boiler. Also adjusted the air to fuel mixture. Any issues, please call back." Next line, that was on January 16, 2022. On January 21, it says, "Returned for boiler, the same boiler they worked on before, turned for boiler smoking, removed boiler assembly and adjusted pilot electrodes on Colin Burner." What is the difference between the electrodes they adjusted on January 21 and the electrodes that they cleaned and adjusted on January 16?
I'm not an HVAC expert. I couldn't answer that. I couldn't answer what the difference is.
Eric, do you have any idea? It seems like, well, we need to hear from Eric.
No, I don't. You know, we hire vendors because we don't know these kinds of things, right? So we have to put a certain amount of faith in the vendor. You know, he stated in the invoice what he had done. If he was trying to be duplicitous, then I think he could have done a better job. So, you know, so to answer your question, no, I don't know. But do I have faith that the vendor was trying, was not like trying to pull one over on us? Yeah, I'm pretty confident that they weren't because they were responsive and they communicated what was going on at the time with the supervisor building maintenance. So I really don't have a concern that they were duplicating efforts.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll follow up on this later, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments on item number six, 2022 Repair Boiler at Holden for members of the committee? Members of the council? Members of the public? Bid 2022-345, members of the public? Thank you. Bid number seven, 2021-283 Alpha Bravo Fire Apparatus Repairs. You as well?
That's still me.
Thank you. Kristi, if you could, just for the record, explain why the transfer is needed.
So it's not a transfer of money from one department to another. It's not. All we're doing is requesting that there's about $73,000 in spend. doing is requesting that there's 50, there's about $73,000 in spending authority left on the bid cap that expires June 7th. We are asking that $50,000 of that spending authority be transferred to budget code 35330. So, it'll still, it'll still be Public Works that's handling the invoices and, but it will come out of the fire department's vehicle repair budget.
But it still falls under the, like you said, the Public Works, because it is the Public Works that is responsible for the upkeep and the vehicles?
Correct.
And the apparatuses?
Yes. So essentially what will happen for the balance of this bid in this fiscal year, I will pull the purchase orders for the repairs on the fire apparatus, whether it be from 65314 or 35330. So the fire department can see what's happening. You know, we, we have meetings now, once a month, we discuss things, you know, things come up during the weeks, we take care of it. We just don't have the funding available in our budget code to cover the rest of their needs, so...
Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor?
Thank you. So Kristi, if you're pulling 50,000 out of, I'm going to call it your account, 65314, are you going to have enough money in that account to do whatever you need to do between now and the end of this fiscal year?
This request is, is to transfer that spending authority to 35330, we're not taking $50,000 out of our budget code, we're taking it out of the fires budget code.
You're taking...
When this bid was awarded, All In, it was $175,000 cap out of budget code 65314.
Right.
We're taking $50,000 of that spending authority from 65314 and transferring it to 35330.
I understand that. And my question was, if you're taking 50,000 out of 65314, you at least, I'm just going to go with your budget number of 175, so that leaves 125,000 in your line item 65314. Is that going to be adequate? Whatever the balance is in 65314, after you take out the 50,000 and transfer it into 35330?
We're not trans, we're not physically transferring money, we are transferring spending authority from the budget code.
Oh, just spending authority, got it, got it, got it, got it, okay. So, now that reduces your spending authority in 65314 by $50,000.
Right.
Is that going to negatively affect you between now and the end of the fiscal year? We didn't, we're not transferring dollars, you're transferring spending authority. So you've got $50,000 less of spending authority in 65314. Whatever you have left in that number now, in that spending authority, is that going to be adequate to get you through the rest of the fiscal year? Or do we assume or anticipate that the department, your department, will be coming back to us in a month from now, a week from now, or two months from now, looking for an increase in spending authority?
I, I would love to say that, that'll be sufficient, but I, I couldn't honestly tell you. We have, I think, four engines down right now, ladder truck needs to be fixed, and that's just what has come up since the weekend, or over the weekend. This 50, if, if I, if we don't do this and transfer the spending authority to fires budget code, then I, it will have a negative impact on my department.
I'm not suggesting that you don't do it. I didn't ask that question, nor am I suggesting it. I'm just looking to anticipate what may occur at some point down the road that the department, your department, will be coming back to us looking for additional spending authority. I'm just looking to anticipate that. We have lots of money projections that are floating around out there now, so I'm trying to wrap my arms around all of these dollars.
I, I honestly couldn't tell you what will need to be repaired in the next two months.
Okay. Thank you, that's the only question I have on that.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further questions from members of the council? Members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public on 2021-283, Alpha Bravo Fire Apparatus Repair? Hearing none, we'll move on to bid number eight, 2022-270 Charlie, Original Equipment Manufacturer Parts for Various Vehicles. This has been requested by Councilman Lattisor. Councilman Lattisor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think this would be pretty simple, Kristi, in the last paragraph on this, it says, "Also, it should be noted that the city will be responsible for incurring freight charges from these vendors," plural, "if necessary, as they will not be held to a particular specification from prohibiting those charges." So, when you say incurring freight charges from these vendors, that would be not only this vendor you're looking to add to the list, but the original approved vendors?
It's, it's any vendor that didn't submit a bid. So I have a very long list of vendors that are on the 566. Full disclosure, I used the same memo and I changed the pertinent information and I just missed that word, so it should say this vendor.
Oh, okay, fine. So, is that like the norm that we, we, do we, we pay freight on all of the items that you have to bring in from these vendors?
Unless it's something that we can pick up, if we have to have it drop ship from somewhere, or if they have to, you know, they're not close by, or they have to ship it to us, then yes, we do. If we don't have a contract with them, they can charge us ship, shipping.
The companies that we do have contracts with, does it include shipping, or is that something that they bill us for in addition?
They have to indicate on their bid that we don't allow shipping, that they acknowledge that, and they are held to that.
You must also be seeing an increase in the shipping costs too, right? Given the cost of fuel, et cetera?
Yes. We're seeing, we're seeing increases just across the board on everything.
Right, right. And unfortunately, I think that's going to be a problem that we're going to have to continue to deal with going forward too. That's it, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from members of the council? Any other questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public? Thank you all, now we'll move on to bid nine, 2022-356, Five Year Rate Study. This is found on page 46. This was requested by Councilman Lattisor. Councilman Lattisor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman, and this question may need to go to purchasing, I'm not sure. It says, "Unfortunately, the vendor could not supply, speaking to the certificate of good standing as required in bid specifications. Unfortunately, the vendor could not supply this requirement and we had no choice but to rescind the contract award." So, the certificate of good standing, is that something that you, and I, I remember when we, when we passed this, but I don't remember exactly the language verbatim, is that something that you require with, to be submitted with the bid? Or is that something that you ascertain after the whole bid process is through and it comes before us and we vet it and we vote on it and whatever?
Once any item goes through you and is approved by council and we get the signed resolution, it's approved by the mayor, that, that point, we send a contingent letter to all the vendors that were awarded and ask them for their certificate of insurance, certificate of good standing, so on and so forth. Once we receive everything, then they're officially awarded. In this particular case, we wouldn't, we could not get this from this vendor.
And, this is not the first time that, you know, this has occurred, so would it be helpful to you? Because I know the costs associated with having to, you know, rebid this and re-mail it, et cetera, et cetera. And, as you know, I do a fair amount of bidding in my world, and most cases, when we submit a bid, we have to produce the certificate of insurance, not often with the certificate of good standing, but would it be helpful to not only yourself, but the department heads as well, whoever is involved in the bidding process, would it be helpful to require the insurance certificate and the certificate of good standing to accompany the bid? It's not a big deal to get them, I've had to get, the insurance certificates are simple.
Right.
The certificate of good standing isn't a big deal to get, it's, you know, either a phone call or an email, and it's very easy to get.
It's stated within the bid that this is going to be, if you are awarded this bid, you are going to be required to get these documents. Many, many vendors send them at the time they put their submission through. So we, in, in many cases, have it already.
But not in all cases, as we have right here.
Not in all cases, and unfortunately, the way your ordinance was written, is certificate of good standing has to be within a certain timeframe, which is a, a year.
Right.
So, sometimes these repetitive bids, they're, they're, you know, depending on when they filed for the certificate of insurance, sometimes it's a little bit, you know, we have it, sometimes we don't. So, I don't want to make them go through the cost of getting it when we already have it in some cases. In, in the beginning, when this ordinance went through, it was a little shaky and we were having a little issue with vendors, but to be honest with you, we have a lot of repeat vendors, so they're, they're pretty much know that this is something that's going to be required, and it, and it works out fine, to be honest. This is the first time I've ever had to renege on somebody because they wouldn't provide it. And we can actually go online and look, and we could not find that there was a good standing, so I think this was, they, they couldn't provide one.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's all I got on that, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public? That concludes the bid package. If I may have a motion on the full consent calendar?
Fiable action?
Second. Have a motion, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The Finance Committee moves on to the agenda. If I may have a acceptance of the minutes for the meeting held on February 23?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, PCR 28-22, bid, formally bid 2022-336, Repairs to Rescue Two. This has been per request of the department to be held until the next meeting. What, what is the date on that, please? 21, thank you, 21 March. If I have a motion to hold until 21 March?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three, PCO 35-21, Inordinance Amending Section 74-52 of the Code of Ordinances to Conform the Tax Levis and Exemptions of Renewable Energy Systems with Rhode Island General Laws and Require Certain Documentation to Be Submitted to the City of Warwick. This is requested by Councilman Gebhardt for First Passage.
So this is attached to some of the work we're doing tonight related to solar. It was pointed out by a resident at some point in the multi-month process that this has been, that there was language in that ordinance that could be misconstrued to think that a commercial-scale solar would be eligible for some tax exemption, which is in fact not the case. So the, the purpose of the Planning Department working on rewriting this ordinance was to clarify and remove any of that confusing language and make sure that it was, it was clear of what the intent of this was. I'd ask for favorable action.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any questions for members of the committee? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Good evening, if you may identify yourself in your ward, please.
Al Comar, Ward 1 Residence. Good evening, everyone. I had a few questions, and I know this is heavily wrapped up into state law, and so you've got to go back to the state law and look at this. And now knowing what our definitions are in the solar ordinance, and looking at the definitions here, which are wrapped up in state law, so we don't want to change too much, but in, on the first page, under Authority, number one, it says residential or manufacturing properties. Now, we don't have a manufacturing zone, we have commercial, we have industrial. What exactly does manufacturing mean here? Was it taken directly from the state law?
It's an excellent question. I see the man who can answer it approaching.
Good evening, Neil Dupuy, Director of Assessing. The definition of a manufacturer is contained in Rhode Island General Law 44-33, subsection 20, and we would use that same definition, it's pretty comprehensive.
Okay, so, right here, you're saying manufacturing properties in Warwick translate to commercial and industrial?
No, you have to specifically be a manufacturer. So you have to have a product, you have to take raw materials and convert those raw materials into a finished product that can be sold.
All right, so my mind is going through a recent court case where, I think it was in Portsmouth, the court defined solar, commercial solar projects, large scale, as a manufacturing entity. And we really don't talk about it in those terms here in Warwick, so I just want to make sure that this is consistent with our solar ordinance, the state law, and what in actuality is happening in Warwick as far as what solar, large-scale commercial properties activities are called.
That's actually addressed in that same statute, 44-3320. I believe it's 1974, so the manufacturing status of a power producer would have to have existed prior to that, so it wouldn't be subject to anything that's solar.
Okay, could you repeat that again, subject to, anything that was constructed before?
1974, I believe, I'd have to look back, but...
Okay.
Somewhere in that range.
So it's previous projects constructed already?
Yeah, so basically just national grid would comply.
Okay.
There's no other power producer.
Oh, okay, national grid, all right, gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
I might have some more of that, go your way.
Sure.
All right. So, and the next one, number two, under Authority, there is a, already a set payment by state law to municipalities as a cap. I think that's $5 per kilowatt right now. Do you see that expanding, or is the, does the council feel that's a good number, because other municipalities have felt it's too low? And what they were doing is pulling the rug out from underneath solar developers and rezoning the land underneath to get higher property tax to offset the low $5 per kilowatt. In the Senate, last session, they tried to put in to increase that to $9, and it just was too little, it was too much too late. So, do you feel that this is sufficient right now? Because it's only $5 per kilowatt, unless the State General Assembly changes this?
My understanding is that the, the majority of these projects fall under some sort of pilot agreement, but, but perhaps...
Yeah, the only ones that would be subject to the $5 per kilowatt fee would be the commercial solar on a contaminated property. So all the other ones are going to be excluded, this ordinance is actually an exemption, so if it is on a residential property or it is on a manufacturing property, there would be no tax.
Okay, so this only applies, the $5 per kilowatt would only apply to, would it apply to new solar?
Ms. Comar, if you don't mind, I'm so sorry, if you could ask me, the chairman, and I'll refer to the, thank you.
Bad habit, sorry.
No worries.
Okay, yes. Is this going to pertain to proposed solar projects, new, on any properties in Warwick? Or only uncontaminated? I just couldn't quite follow that answer.
Phil?
Yes, so...
I'm sorry, Neil.
That's all right. Again, this ordinance in front of the committee tonight is to exempt any solar use that's added to a residential property or to a manufacturing establishment. So the only thing that's allowed under this, I don't know if it's a separate ordinance, but I believe the only large-scale commercial solar would be on a contaminated property, and that would be subject to the $5 per kilowatt. But that's only for the personal property, it doesn't include the value of the land.
Okay, not being able to predict the future, property zone, open... property zone, open space, a residential, even if these new regulations were adopted, could ask the council for a zone change to a commercial or industrial? So would they be subject to the $5 kilowatt? Or a full-out exemption?
Neil, if you, do you have an answer to that, or is there someone who would?
Well, I would think that would be something the city would try to enter into a pilot agreement in if the city so felt it was in the best interest of the city. Other than that, I don't think they would issue the zone change in the first place.
Well, we don't know for sure. Nobody's tried it yet. I just want to make sure that this is written for all cases that might occur. So if there's a zone change, and you're going from open space to residential, those are the hot properties being targeted right now, and they ask for a zone change for commercial and industrial, and they're not contaminated, do they fall under the $5 per kilowatt, or are they tax exempted?
Mr. Dupuy?
The way I understand the ordinance, no large-scale commercial solar would be approved unless it is on a contaminated property. And Tom can correct me if I'm wrong there. So it's not an issue? The council wouldn't have the authority without amending this ordinance as well?
But
Counselor to the chair.
Director, to her question, if it were, it would fall under the five, it would, not being a manufacturing property and not being something pre-existing, not being residential accessory, it would fall under the standard taxation. If it were not in a pilot agreement, it would fall under the standard taxation for solar.
Yes, because that's part of the state law.
Okay, so put it in my own words, like I understand. So if the zone change is permitted through council for an application, and it's zone commercial or industrial, they, for a new solar project, they would fall under the $5 per kilowatt or whatever the state sets at the time. And it does say whatever the state sets at the time, in case that does change. I think that's clear in number two, the same section. Is that correct? It's whatever the current value is, set by law?
Correct.
Okay.
Or the pilot agreement agreed to between the city and the developer.
Okay, could you explain more about this pilot agreement? It's the first time I hear about a pilot agreement. It's not in the statute.
Mr. Dupuy, if you could, wouldn't mind?
Sure. So a pilot agreement is a payment in lieu of taxes, which means both the city and the taxpayer agree to a set amount. Doesn't have to conform to the market value of the property like a typical tax would. So as part of the negotiation process to getting the project approved, there would typically be a pilot agreement or at least a discussion of entering into one as part of the approval.
Well, is there a chance that the pilot program could be less than what the state sets? Or is the state say this is a minimum, $5 per kilowatt or whatever the value may be in the future?
Neil?
No, it, my understanding is it's what the state considers a maximum unless there is an agreement between the parties. So the parties can agree to more. As far as the state's concerned, that is the maximum, though. But if both parties agree, there is no restriction.
I stand corrected. You're right. That is a maximum. Thank you. All right, just a couple more here. Under B, tax levies and exemptions, that's the second page, number two. What about the case of a home, a residential property that has a home occupancy permit? So they're a business in their house, and they've applied through the city to get a permit for a home occupancy permit, and they have solar. So technically, they're a business in a residential. Are they exempt? I'm hoping they are, but as I read this, I'm not quite sure.
So a residential that has got a permit to run a business from the residence?
Right.
Are they exempt? Do they get, clarify the, or state the question again?
Yes, I would hope they would get the exemption because they're a resident and they happen to have a small business they can run out of their home, which is pretty common nowadays, recently. I'm just not sure that's clear in there. And I want this to be written so that somebody that runs a small business doesn't have to jump through hoops. They can just refer to here and it's in plain English for them.
Thank you. And Ms. Comar, just to further clarify, you're talking about an accessory use solar on their house, like a rooftop or
Right.
or detached structure or something. Okay, so I think, is that enough information to answer the question?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. You know, we might need a legal interpretation. In most cases, those exceptions that allow them to operate a business out of the home are going to be temporary in nature, and they're not going to run with the land. So it's waived during their term of ownership. And as long as it's a residential use, I believe it complies with this segment. But if there's any portion of the property where it's used more like a regular office, and you've got clients coming in and clients going out, then I would disagree, and I would say it would not comply with this exemption.
Okay.
But that's my opinion.
All right, so looking at number two that we were just speaking about, and going down to under C, documentation, number one, this whole part of selling a portion of their electricity back, I mean, in residential uses, one of the motivations and promotions is, well, you reduce your electric bill, but don't you sell back and get a credit to your electric bill? So you have to sell first, or they read your reading or something, and then you get credit for, you know, your own electricity bill deduction.
My understanding, Ms. Comar, is that most systems are designed to the load capacity or the usage of the house of the property itself based off of the current usage or past usage. So I don't, I don't know that I see that one, but I'm not sure if anyone has anything to add on that.
Yeah, the idea is it's net metering, meaning that they could expunge basically their utility bill up to the amount that they would normally be charged. So if it goes over that and they're selling power back to the grid on a continual basis, then it wouldn't be exempt. They wouldn't be allowed to do that.
I think it automatically happens right now. I think you have to sell back or get a credit to get a reduction off your bill. Is that correct? I just don't want the resident to get caught up in, I'm selling, because actually it's kind of a credit. So how are they looked at here? The residential home that has solar, that's trying to get deduction off their utility bill, but they have to go to the utility company to get a credit first. Is that, I just like this clear cut, and I don't know if you have to keep citing state law, but I like this very simple for residents, that they know they're exempt, whether they're a home occupancy, they have solar in their house, and yep, they got to work through the utility company to get credit. I just want to make it very clear that residents are exempt if it's an accessory use. And I don't see that really in black and white here.
My understanding of our intent and the way that this was drafted and the way we laid this out was to meet what you're describing, which is that a standard resident who had solar panels on their house to offset their own energy costs would not be subject to taxation. That's actually the original intent, from what I've gathered, of this exemption, why it was put in place in the first place.
Thank you. It's a great intent, but again, I don't see it simply written for the homeowner. Whether they have a home occupancy business or they are just, you know, trying to reduce their utility bills, which is the reason why they've got the solar panels, I just don't see it popping out. And I'd request some kind of amendment just to help residents so they don't have to hire an attorney or bother City Hall and get another interpretation, review this tape or whatever. Something very simple to the residents.
So if I could clarify a little bit?
Thank you, Director Dupuy.
To use an analogy, if your utility bill is $100 a month, you could sell back up to $1,200 per year to National Grid. You're not authorized under state law to do any more than that, right? That's what the net metering function is. So it's really already addressed. I don't think any amendment needs to be put in here. They do reference the net metering. And the residential property owner would not be allowed to sell at a profit to the grid.
Okay, well, to work around that, is there a definition, Chair, of net metering that would clear this up? Because I wasn't, I could kind of sense what it was by reading the ordinance, but I don't think it's very simple for a resident to understand what net metering is and what it isn't. Could we add a definition? Would that clarify this a little bit better? I'm just making, trying to make it easy for a resident.
Councilman Gebhardt?
You're looking to see if there's a preceding definition?
That's true. It could be in state law. Well, may I go on my last question while he's looking that answer for me?
Certainly.
Save some time?
Thank you.
Under C, documentation, number one, says property owners installing renewable energy systems. Does that cover all the cases where we might have a property owner who doesn't, like an absentee landlord that's leased land, and you have a leasing or the leasing, as we know with the solar companies across the state, it trickles down to another company. You don't even see that company pop out through the application process. So you might have a property owner, a leasing, or they're subleases. How does that handle? Are you going to hang it on the property owner to comply with all this? They may not even be involved with the solar activity at all.
So just to restate your question, where you're suggesting that a property owner has leased their property to another entity, that entity independently goes and enters into some agreement with a solar company to install solar on their roof, enters into a net metering scenario, and then now the onus is on the property owner to provide the documentation described in section one?
Well, the section I'm describing, section one, has an or in it. So it's net metered, and that's in line one, two, three, four, five. So it's net metered, or if the system is selling a portion or all the energy produced back to the electric distribution company, blah, blah. So I think this section here is written for both cases. The small, not metered, and then the large, I'm selling back to the electric company. So that's why I thought property owners, my suggestion was, property owners and leases and subleases. And that would be my suggested amendment if I'm on track here with my thought process.
Did you have, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor.
I was just going to suggest that, you know, having the owner as the responsible party, you know, where the buck stops seems to make sense, but I'll leave that to someone else.
Yeah, one of the fundamental rights, you know, most people have heard of the bundle of rights that you have when you own property is to lease and rent the property. So we can't restrict somebody's rights that they have under the Constitution. I don't think that's an issue for this ordinance. Again, the solicitor can clarify if he needs to, but that's my opinion.
Solicitor, did you want to answer this first or the previous question asked first? Want to wrap this up and then we'll?
I was concluding the other one. If I could just have the restated comment from the director.
That one of the fundamental rights of ownership is the ability to rent or lease your property. So unless they have some kind of restrictive covenant, and they live in a condominium, or in some cases, there are restrictions that run with the land, but the city doesn't have the authority, in my opinion, to restrict somebody's ability to rent or lease, and it shouldn't impact on the wording of this ordinance.
I would concur with the director as to the necessity for itemizing it within the confines of the tax exemption ordinance. So I agree with the director.
Thank you, Solicitor. And the previous question, that was, would you like it repeated? You were doing a little research, and she moved on to the next question.
Sure.
Yeah, that was about net metering. If we could put a definition, if there was a definition, a graph from state statute?
I would defer again to the director as to the necessity to codify. This exemption is completely based on the state law, so it's inherent in that. But I would defer with the person who has to implement the ordinance itself as to the appropriateness of needing to codify or, you know, what the contents of that definition should entail.
Yep. So I don't have the site reference, but the definition of net metering is absolutely in the state statute. So we're just using the common, ordinary meaning of that.
That's great. All right, going back to, I didn't have a chance to respond to the last comment. I don't have any new ones after this. So under C, documentation, number one, property owners installing. Property owners don't always install solar. They pass it on through a leasing or subleasing to install. So I just want to make sure that we're not missing the actual company installing, which may be a leasing or a subleasing. That's why I was going to put property owners and leases and subleases, if applicable, you could say, installing renewable energy systems. Because the projects in Warwick, the property owners are not installing renewable energy systems. They are leasing or ones under sale, but the two, the two most known ones are leasing arrangements.
But this section C1 describes basically an either-or, right? So are you installing solar for the purposes of net metering, i.e. offsetting your bill, or for the purpose of selling back as a power generation as your primary motive, right?
I know it has that or in there, so you want to catch property owners. I just want to make it clear and on the record here that a leasing, which is more common the case, is going to be developing solar, and it applies in here.
I'm just reading.
Solicitor?
So I don't think we're looking at it in terms of the property owner physically climbing up on the roof and installing the solar array. So it's like if you put vinyl siding on your house, right? You put vinyl siding on your house, but you had a contractor do the work. And that's the same thing here with my understanding of the way it's worded. I don't see the ambiguity there.
Yeah, I'm speaking of the or case where they're selling back. This is a large-scale commercial. Does it catch the large-scale commercial solar that's leasing land? That's my question.
In terms of carving them out of the exemption?
Right, it says or, this is an or paragraph here, right? So they're either net metered or the system is selling.
Ms. Comar, while the councilman is reviewing that, I just want to let you know that this is a very important issue, and we understand that.
Right.
But I'm going to, after the councilman answers that, I'm going to go to Councilman Rick so he can address. And then I'm going to go to the next, I'm going to go to the next speaker.
That was my last question.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I think just to Ms. Comar's point, if you go back up before documentation, number two, we are exempting personal property taxation for net metered renewable energy systems whose sole purpose is to offset electricity bills, not sell power back to the grid.
Correct. That's the exemption.
So the exemption is only for net metering, right? So what documentation is talking about is, hey, if you're going to put up solar, you need to provide us with some documentation that says whether you are
You can claim it. Right, you can claim it.
or producing. If you're producing, it doesn't matter if you're the lease or the lessee, a friend, a cousin, you're not getting the exemption.
Okay, thank you. As a resident, I just find this a little wordy, and I know you're wrapped up in state law here, but somehow it would be better if that made it clear, or the intent section, which sometimes the state laws have intent section. There isn't one here. Maybe that should be spelled out somewhere.
And to Ms. Comar's point, maybe what we need is a simple one-pager that's available on the city website that says, hey, if you're a resident who wants to do solar, here are the stipulations of how you can and how you can't.
That'd be helpful. That'd be helpful to advertise this.
If you're going to the book of ordinance to try to figure out how to do something, you'll probably be, end up confused unless you are a lawyer or have one with you.
That's right. All right. Thanks, everyone, for your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ricks?
I was just going to point out on that last one that I know that the I know that the words that were under the microscope there on C1 was the phrase "property owners", but really it's the following word, "installing". That's the key word here. So as a matter of statutory interpretation, in the phrase "property owners installing renewable energy systems", a question for the council solicitor. Does the word "installing" include implicitly the concept of allowing it to be installed? As in, the property owner is allowing a company to install, therefore, that's captured in the meaning of the word "installing" that we're using in this sentence?
Thank you, councilman. I would concur that the primary focus here is on the action being undertaken. And as the director indicated, as to how their office interprets the language presented here, this is about presenting what you're doing, A or B in this case. And if it's A, there's one set of actions that need to be taken. If it's B, there's others. And the office would follow through, but it's tied to the underlying activity in this case.
Makes sense to me. So it's the property owner who is ultimately responsible for meeting these requirements. It doesn't matter if it's a lessor or a sublessor or cousin or space alien coming down from the sky to put into these solar systems. The property owner is the one responsible for providing the documentation. And it's considered the property owner who is installing the energy system. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Good evening, Mrs. Derring. If you wouldn't mind identifying yourself, the ward, and you may speak.
I'm Leslie Derrick, Ward 4. And I wanted just to clarify some things. I own solar. I have solar on my roof. And the way it worked with us is when we put the solar on our roof, we became a energy-producing company. And so they put 25 panels on our house. We did not need 25 panels on our house, but we could produce more energy than what we needed. We sell our energy to National Grid. National Grid then takes that amount off our bill. Anything left over, they send us a check. So I do produce some money. But then again, I have a huge loan that I had to take out in order to put my solar panels up, $48,000 loan. And so I'm paying off my loan for the next 20 years. But I just wanted to clarify that. And the other thing that I wanted to mention on this was also, if a farmer decided to put up solar panels on his farmland right next to a residential zone property, what is the case on that? And how does that get clarified with this particular bill?
Does that fall under, or is that coming up?
Well, I mean, in terms of can they, would they be permitted, that'll be coming up under the ordinance, right? It would fall under the setbacks and performance standards that are in that. As to your question, I think the director could clarify, but my reading of this is that if the intent of that were to offset, you know, the energy needs of the farm, and they were to be at a net zero posture, then there would be no additional taxes incurred on that usage. But if they were to be in a posture of, I have a farm, but I've now turned it into a...
This just happened in, I think, North Kingston, so that's a good example to probably use. But I just wanted to let you know that I am, I now have a business at my house. So that's, I'm a new energy producer.
Congratulations.
And I get to deduct it from my income tax. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Derring. Are there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on PCO 35-21? Seeing none, if I may have a motion for first passage.
Second.
I have a motion for favorable. I have a second. May, all those in favor?
Aye.
The time is now 6:06, and that concludes the finance committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give everybody the roadmap. Next up is the ordinance committee. We will be getting together on the ordinance committee now, then there's a few more committees after that. At 7 o'clock, we will have the public hearing on PCO 2-22 and PCO 3-22. That will be at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Chasing me around, sorry. All right, I'll let you know in one second. Okay? I'll come find him.
Good evening, everyone. The ordinance committee is open at 6:11. Councilman Sinapi is not here at this time, so I'm going to sit in for him. If I could get the acceptance for the minutes for the February 7th?
Move to accept.
Second.
Moved and accepted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. First up is a PCO 2-22, an ordinance relative to amendments of Amendment B, comprehensive plan. Can I get a recommendation to move this to the public hearing?
Recommend to move to the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, the hearing will be, okay. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number two this evening is PCO 3-22, an ordinance amending Appendix X zoning ordinance. Can I get a motion to move this to the public hearing?
Move to public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number three this evening is PCO 5-22, an ordinance requiring collective bargaining agreement contracts submitted to the city council for ratification to be presented with complete drafts in clean and red-line formats. Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'll just read the additions into the record. So it's to provide a clean draft of the complete contract and a red-line draft of the complete contract showing the changes in the most recent contract in effect, with deleted languages appearing in red color with strike-through and new language appearing in blue color with underline. This is, this is very important to anyone who is sitting on this council today, tomorrow, or otherwise. Over the years, we have had to request the full version or the current version of a contract in order to compare what is the new language, what are the deletions. That becomes extremely time-consuming when you have to be going back and forth from one document to another to try and understand what took place or what is taking place currently, what is going to be changed going forward, both in new language and deleted language. Oftentimes, in a contract, there's trade-offs, which is why they call them contract negotiations. There's trade-offs where one thing is increased, but something else may be decreased. There may be items that are eliminated altogether and new items added in. I feel it's very important that when the city council receives a new contract, it's inclusive of the current contract and any of those changes to be identified the way it is now. It'll make it very simple, or certainly a lot easier, for us to be able to back into what's there now and look at what's changing, or simply just to sit there and decide whether or not, or why, some of those proposed changes are taking place. In the past, it has not been uncommon for us, and I'm sitting here now in my fifth term, it's not uncommon for us to only receive language of the proposed changes. Well, it's pretty difficult to be able to rationalize or understand or disagree or approve changes if you don't know what the original language was in the first place. It's time-consuming to have to reach out to get these documents, to print them all out, if you're not internet-savvy, such as this councilperson. And to me, it just makes all the sense in the world that we have the current contract inclusive of deletions and inclusions into that contract. Makes it a lot easier for us to review it, makes it a lot easier for us to understand it, makes it a lot easier for us to reach out for any questions that we may have. We shouldn't have to be flipping through pages of different documents to be able to fully understand what the impact is of the proposed contract that we'll be ratifying. Having said that, Mr. President, I would ask for the support of the committee on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lattiser. So I agree with the councilman. I think this is a productive item. It makes it clearer. It gives it, so we can, everyone can follow it. We'll also make this available to the public as well when this document, when the next collective bargaining agreements come forward. Any questions from members of the ordinance committee?
Mr. President, if I, I'm sorry, if I may, anyone who would like to co-sponsor on this, including yourself, I'd be very happy to have any co-sponsors sign on. Thank you.
Great. Councilman Rick, would you like to co-sponsor?
Yeah.
Councilman McElroy would like to co-sponsor as well. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the council? Councilman Gephardt.
Not so much a question, just a brief statement that, I mean, this is really good common sense, very helpful. Being in my first term and having just gone through a couple of these, I've seen that sometimes the language, sometimes we do get what you're describing, and it's incredibly helpful to have a full document that shows what's changed and what was there before. And sometimes we don't, and then you have to piece it together on your own. So I think consistency is key here. So I commend the councilman for the legislation, and I would like to be added if you'd have me as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, councilman. Also, I would just add that this is something for us that can change. So as you've heard me say in the past, the mayor's office changes over time. All of our seats change over time. So because there is cooperation today, and there is, things change. Positions change. Council people change. This will codify it, in fact, as a requirement, and then it's not left up to politics. You all know I'm a major supporter of getting rid of the politics and just deal with the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the public on PCO 5-22? Any questions from members of the public? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Move. Favorable action. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose, any abstentions? Thank you very much, and the ordinance committee closes at 6:19. The next committee will take place is the Public Safety Committee, and that is set to start whenever the chairman is ready. Thank you.
We're waiting for you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Aye.
Do we have a motion from February 23rd?
Move to accept minutes of February 23rd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number one, PCR 29-22, a resolution regards to erecting stop signs on Bellevue Avenue where it intersects with Con Street and Astral Street. Councilman Ricks.
Simple item, and it's supported by a traffic study. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move, favorable action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Public Safety Committee meeting ends at 6:23.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The next committee that will meet is the Intergovernmental Committee, and that is
It is now 6:24, and the Intergovernmental Committee will now begin. The first order is business, the acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on January 19th, 2022.
Move, favorable action.
Second. All in favor? The first item on the agenda is PCR 30-22, a resolution in opposition to legislation prohibiting single-family residential zoning in municipalities with populations over 20,000. Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Chairman. So, I'll just read from the draft language itself. House Bill 6638 and Senate Bill 2340. It's legislation that's pending in the General Assembly that would prohibit single-family residential zoning in municipalities with populations over 20,000 and mandate the adoption of zoning regulations for middle housing in single-family residential zones. It would also mandate that the model middle housing ordinance be created by the State Building Code Standards Committee would override local ordinances, would override local ordinances should municipal governing bodies fail to amend their comprehensive plan to provide for middle housing by January 30th, 2023. The bill would assert the traditional zoning powers of cities and towns to comprehensively regulate, and on a local level, the land use in their communities would overtax local communities' availability to provide adequate public safety measures and other necessary municipal services. I think that the city of Warwick is quite capable of taking care of our own residential properties, our own residential needs, and certainly having control over our zoning, et cetera. I don't feel that we need, nor should we have, the General Assembly intervening in the day-to-day business of cities and towns. And it's for these reasons that I had docketed this item, as some of our other cities and towns have done as well. It is co-sponsored by Councilman Foley, Councilman Sinapi, Councilman Gebhardt, and at this time, I would respectfully request any other co-sponsors that would like to sign on to this item, and let's get it up to the General Assembly. Thank you.
Anyone like to sign on? Council President?
Council, Councilman, may I be added as a co-sponsor?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
And you're also added? Would I like to be added? Anyone on the committee want to speak on it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Councilman Lattiser on this. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor, and I agree that this is an overreach. I have talked to some members of the Warwick delegation up at the State House, and they are not in support of this. They believe, as I do, as Councilman Lattiser indicated, that, you know, Warwick should decide what our neighborhoods and communities should look like, and that's an important part of what we do. And so I'm glad that we are doing a resolution opposing this legislation, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions from the committee? Mr. Ricks?
Thank you. Reading over, and I'm looking at House Bill 6638. Unfortunately, I cannot join in support of Councilman Lattiser's resolution. I think that, and this is not because I oppose single-family housing, but for different reasons. Specifically, the resolution states, the resolution in front of us here tonight states that House Bill 6638 and its Senate counterpart would prohibit single-family dwellings or single-family housing, but that, excuse me, that is not actually what House Bill 6638 would do. Under our current zoning ordinances, excuse me, under our current zoning ordinances, if a property owner or developer, in cooperation with the property owner, desires to build a duplex or similar on land that is zoned for single-family housing, they would have to go to the zoning board to request relief to build that duplex. Or similar middle housing, whether it's a three-unit, four-unit, row houses, that sort of item. This is all notwithstanding the various dimensional requirements, dimensional requirements such as, as frequently here in Warwick, say, 20 feet of front yard, 20 feet backyard, or larger, five feet each side setbacks, setbacks such as that. Other requirements such as, without a special variance, not able to build a third-story height restrictions. We have all sorts of different restrictions on the books that if anyone wants to build in excess or beyond what's allowed by those dimensions with the setbacks, the height, et cetera, they have to come in front of the zoning board in order to accomplish that. Similarly, under our current zoning, as well as the zoning for many of these other cities and towns that have a population of over 20,000, by my quick look up online, it seems that 19 of the 39 cities and towns across Rhode Island would fall into that category, along with Warwick being one of those 19. The standard that's used across most, if not all, of these 19 cities and towns is that single-family zones are very common, there are very few zones where duplexes or the like are actually encouraged. So, the intent of this House Bill, number 6638, is to expand, in a way, expand the areas where it would be acceptable without having to go to the zoning board to be able to build a duplex on your own property. Essentially, the default across these 19 cities and towns, and in Warwick in particular, is that if you want to build a duplex, you have to go to the zoning board. If you want to build a single-family house, then as long as it's within all of the other restrictions, you don't have to go to the zoning board. What this basically does is it switches that default, so that now, if you want to build a duplex, then as long as you're meeting all of those other requirements, you don't have to go in front of the zoning board. If you want to build a single family, then you do have to go to the zoning board. However, with this particular bill, I'm referring to House Bill 6638, looking at the second page, lines 28 through 29, it expressly states, "This section does not prohibit local governing bodies from permitting single-family dwellings in areas zoned for single-family dwellings." So, the language of that House Bill itself makes clear that they are not trying to outlaw single-family housing. It's a matter of trying to make it simpler for property owners to build a duplex on their own property if they want to. And yes, it would also make it a little bit harder for property owners to build a single-family house on their own land if they wanted to. And I think that a debate can be had over whether our current system of forcing property owners to go to the zoning board just to build a duplex is really merited across so many of the neighborhoods that are zoned single-family housing here in Warwick, including areas such as Norwood. Vast majority of the Norwood neighborhood, part of Ward II, is zoned for single-family housing, but if anyone takes a drive through the Norwood neighborhood, or even better, a walk through the beautiful Norwood neighborhood, they'll see many multifamily housing, much multifamily housing, all of which was constructed before the modern zoning ordinances, and I certainly don't think that the various duplexes and the like in the Norwood neighborhood do anything to detract from, from the quality of life in the neighborhood. So, for those reasons, although I'm not stating that I'm in full support of what House Bill 6638 is attempting to do, I think that it should be easier for people to build duplexes on their own land, but I also don't think that we should necessarily require people to go to the zoning board if they simply want to build a single-family residence on their own land either, so long as it's in conformance with all of the other standards. I'm going to effectively stay neutral on House Bill 6638. I think that if it were to move forward, it would need some more refining, and it does appear that that is what is happening up at the General Assembly, without having any inside knowledge or speaking with the sponsors up at the General Assembly. I do see on the House bill tracker that back in mid-February, the hearing in front of the House Municipal Government and Housing Committee had been postponed at the request of the sponsor, I would presume because the sponsor of the bill wanted to refine it more. So, for those reasons, I think that it would be premature for us to pass a resolution opposing House Bill 6638 at this time, and for those reasons, I'm going to, I would intend to vote against the resolution. Thank you.
Council President?
I just want to add that the League of Cities and Towns is also against this bill. Again, the local zoning should be done on the local level, so, thank you.
Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. So, the intent here is to oppose this proposed action on a city and town. It's plain and simple. We're quite capable of creating our own zoning, we're quite capable of figuring out where to put housing and where not to put housing. Perhaps, Councilman Ricks, you may feel better about this if on line 20, it says, "General Assembly that would," yeah, that would prohibit, would you feel more inclined to support the general concept of opposing this burden on cities and towns if we change that word "would," W-O-U-L-D, to "may," "may prohibit?"
Actually, yes, I could get behind that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Sure. I guess I'd have to request an amendment. Are you guys doing it?
Any questions from the public? Council President?
Thank you. I'd like to make an amendment. I believe it was line 20? 22. We change "would," "General Assembly that would," and we'll change that to "may."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a, okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. I move favorable action as amended.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The Intergovernmental Committee adjourns at 6:39.
The next committee is appointments.
The Council on, the Committee on Appointments comes to order. First up, we have acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on February 7th. Do we have a motion?
Move, favorable action.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry? I said, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're in, seven, yep. Okay. We have four items on the agenda tonight. All are reappointments of sitting members of their respective boards and commissions. So, first up is the Historic District Commission, Donna Blue Tobin. You will find the form signed by the mayor, as well as the biographical sketch in your packet. Are there any questions for members of the committee? Members of the council? Members of the council? Any questions for members of the public? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to reappoint.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second up, same commission, Historical District Commission, Ginny Leslie. As similar as before, the paperwork is all in order. Do I have any questions from the committee? From the council? From the public? Do I have a motion?
Move to reappoint.
All in favor? Aye. Moving right along, we are now into the Sewer Authority. Again, this is a reappointment. Gary Marino. Paperwork is all in order and in front of you. Do I have any questions for members of the committee? Members of the council? Councilman Lottisir.
There you go, that's my name. Thank you, Chairman. No, I don't have any questions. I would just like to comment on Mr. Marino. I have attended, as most of you know, lots of sewer committee meetings. We had a nine-year uphill task in getting those sewers finally underway in Bayside. Much-needed, thirty years overdue sewers. There was a whole host of issues that came up during those twenty-five, thirty years and during the nine years that I was trying to get this done. And Mr. Marino, along with his colleagues on the Sewer Authority, they didn't leave one stone unturned, not one stone, to moving this project forward. And Gary played a significant role on the construction aspect of it, the business aspect of it, et cetera, et cetera. And along with the other appointments that we have tonight and appointments we've done recently, that's where this is at. It's about appointing people who not only are willing to serve on these committees, but are talented and experienced and knowledgeable and skilled in the particular board or commission, or in this case, the Sewer Authority that they're going to serve on. Mr. Marino is certainly one of those individuals. I wish he was in Ward Five, but he's not. But I won't hold that against him. And I would be very, very happy to support his reappointment. He's done a great job. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members of the council? Members of the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to reappoint.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, Sewer Board of Review, Carter Thomas. Similarly, the paperwork in front of you is all in order. Do I have any questions for members of the committee? Members of the council? Members of the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to reappoint.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is all the business of the Appointments Committee, adjourned at six-forty-five. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the committees this evening. We will be back here at seven o'clock. We cannot start early. We don't run into that situation where we ever have to worry about that very often, but we cannot start early. So, at seven o'clock, we will start the full City Council meeting. So, we will see you at seven o'clock.
Good evening, everyone. I call the March 7th, 2022 City Council Meeting to Order. The Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. McAlister.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Gephardt.
Here.
Mr. Howe.
Here.
Mr. Lattiser.
Here.
Mr. McElroy.
Here.
Mr. Rix.
Here.
Mr. Snappy. Ms. Travis. Seven present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'm going to ask Judge Kevin Murphy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. At this time, I just want to take a second and to acknowledge the individual who just led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Judge Kevin Murphy. Judge Murphy was a municipal court judge for over two years here in Warwick. And I just want to thank him. That is a difficult position, and it is a very important position. It affects a lot of residents here in Warwick. Not only did he have the meetings here in person, but they also had it during COVID, where they had to do it over Zoom, you know, a lot of moving parts on there, brand-new world. And they did a great job. The city clerk did an outstanding job. Judge McElroy did an outstanding job as well. So I just want to thank Judge Murphy. It's important that we get individuals that want to serve our city. There's a lot of positions. We did a number of appointments. You'll see again this evening, two appointments. If you're interested in serving your city, there is appointments, there are committees, there is all different ways to get involved. So please reach out to your council. But I think it's important that we take time to thank the people that have served our city. And Judge, you did a great job, and I really want to thank you for your years of service to the city of Warwick. Judge, I don't know if you want to make any comments?
I'll make them very brief. First of all, it was an honor to serve. And as you mentioned earlier, it is important for all of us to serve in whatever way we can. So especially now, as we're coming out of a pandemic, we're entering a brave new world. And it was a challenging time to be a judge. I think it's challenging in any circumstance, but particularly during a pandemic. So thank you for the opportunity to serve, and thank you for acknowledging me this evening.
Thank you very much for your service, Judge. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. So we are, I just want to walk through the game plan for this evening. If you're following along on the agenda, we've done roll call and the Salute to Flags. We are now on General Communications. Then we are going to move to do a few things. Executive communications, there will be none. We're going to do the acceptance of the minutes, and then we are going to quickly move through the appointments. And then we are going to have the public hearing. So I will explain this again once we get to the public hearing part, but there are two public hearings this evening. So there's two opportunities. The first public hearing will be on PCO 2-22, which addresses the comprehensive plan. So there will be an opportunity where council members can ask questions. Then we will open the public hearing. They will be, the process will be, people that want to speak in favor will speak. Then people who are against will speak, and then opportunity for people that just want to speak and ask any individual questions. Then at that time, after the public gets to speak on that one item, PCO 2-22, we will close that public hearing. The council will then take a vote. Then we will move to the second public hearing this evening, which is the PCO 3-22, which is the solar ordinance. The same process will go through again. We will, council members will be able to, after a brief presentation from the administration, council members can ask questions. Then we will open the public hearing. There will be an opportunity for people that are for to speak, for people that are against to speak, and then people who just want to speak and be heard on that topic. After the public gets to speak on that, we will then close that second public hearing, and the council will then entertain a motion. So it is two steps. It is two different public hearings. So we're going to try to keep the trains on the tracks to just discuss the one issue at a time, and we will work together on this. So we are now back up on the general communications. I do have one general communication that I would like, I want to take the opportunity. We have a great crowd, a great showing from the residents of Warwick. There were a number of issues that are coming out before this city council over the next few months. And it is greatly important that members of the city council hear directly from the residents. So I ask you to reach out to your council members for your thoughts on the school administration's application for two new high schools. So this has gone out. RIDE is reviewing this application. The city council forwarded that application. We asked them to continue the process. RIDE is the one that will review the application. RIDE will decide if everything is in order, and if it's not, the school administration will then fix that and then present it to RIDE. If it is accepted by RIDE, it will then come back to the city council. The city council will be the ones that would have to decide if we are going to forward the question to the General Assembly to allow the two high schools, to allow the residents to vote on if they want to have two high schools. Again, that is the only question that would be asked. The city council does not have the authority to change that application. The city council did not get to input on that application. So it won't be a question of one high school or no high schools. It will be the application. Do you support two new high schools? So please, take this time. It's, you know, more information is available. We are here to listen. Let us know what your thoughts on. Eventually, this will come back to the city council for a vote, so we'd love to hear from you. And the second issue we would love to hear you from is on the American Rescue Funds. There are federal dollars that have come into the city of Warwick. We're going to do a lot of infrastructure work. If you read the Beacon, talking about how old our infrastructure is, a lot of investments is going to go into infrastructure. But we also have a lot of opportunities to do smaller projects in our neighborhoods, things that we didn't have the money before to do or the time to do. So please, contact your council members with your thoughts and ideas specifically for neighborhood projects, stuff that can help enjoy everybody in the neighborhood can enjoy. So we are here to listen to you, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to reach out and ask for your interest. All of our emails are available on the city council's website, so please reach out. Any of my colleagues have anything under General Communications at this time? Councilman Rix?
One quick item. We are having our second Tax Relief Commission meeting of this year. That's going to be on Monday, a week from today, here in the city council chambers at 5:30, where we are going to be focusing on perhaps extending or broadening some of the currently existing exemptions for those in greatest need. There will be a full, wide-ranging discussion on all of that at that meeting here, same place, 5:30 PM, a week from today. All members of the public are welcome to attend and provide their comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rix. Councilman Howe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank Mayor Pacozzi for contacting us. Saturday morning, on that beautiful morning, we were able to come here and thank you to the Senior Director of Senior Services, Meg Underwood, for donating her family's Ukrainian flag that now flies in front of City Hall. As we're all aware, that Russia invaded that country, and the mayor, in a great show of support, took down the city of Warwick flag, where the pole of the city of Warwick flag goes, and raised the Ukrainian flag to show the symbolic support that we as a city of Warwick have for Ukraine. So I wanted to thank the mayor and thank Mrs. Underwood and all my colleagues for joining us on Saturday morning in front of City Hall while we did our small part or tried to bring awareness as well as support to the people of Ukraine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Howe. Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to touch on one of the things that you had spoken to, which is the school bond. So it's my feeling that we need to make sure that all the numbers are out there to the taxpayers and to the voters. When I say all the numbers, I'm talking about current bonds. I'm talking about infrastructure costs. I'm talking about contracts, current contracts, new contracts, healthcare costs, lease purchases, the day-to-day cost to operate city government. It's imperative that these numbers, all of the numbers, in an easy-to-understand format that projects out where we could be or will be with or without $350 million in potentially growing budget. Tonight, I will be docking a resolution that will help us to get there. Secondly, today I had the honor and privilege of being at the Warwick Next School, which is in Ward 5, which is the ward that I represent, for the second time since I've been in office to have the pleasure of viewing a principal of that school being recognized. And today, it was Principal Frank Gallagher. He was selected as the number-one first elementary school principal in the state of Rhode Island. That's a Warwick issue. That's a Warwick school system. It's a Warwick principal. Mr. Gallagher was absolutely floored, totally shocked. They did an outstanding job keeping this as a secret. And when I'm there this morning, I'm looking at it as a great honor for Principal Gallagher to receive, but it's also a great honor for the city of Warwick to have one of our principals selected, chosen. I believe they said out of 500 schools or some significantly large number here in the city of Warwick. So I just wanted to put that out there for everyone. Very proud moment for Principal, for Warwick Next School, for our administration, and for our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lattiser. Okay, we are now moving to executive communications. There are none. We're going to do, on A, acceptance of the minutes for the council meeting held on February 23rd. Can I have a motion, Councilman Howe?
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay. We are now moving to item number one, announcement of appointments. Councilman Gephardt.
Just get to the right place here. First off, Harbor Master Guy Couture. That is the only one.
Okay, and that is an announcement that did not take, did not need confirmation.
Correct.
Now, we're on to number two, appointments for requiring confirmation, historical district. First up, committee report, appointments.
The first up is Donna Blue Tobin. The committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Foley. Second by Councilman Rix. And Councilman Lattiser. Any questions that were not asked earlier this evening in the appointments committee? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, the reappointment. Number two this evening, Councilman Gephardt.
Next up is Ginny Leslie, same committee. Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Foley.
I move favorable action for Ginny Leslie.
Second by Councilman Lattiser. And Councilman Howe. Any questions that were not asked earlier this evening? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. The reappointment passes. Next up, the Sewer Authority Committee Report, appointments.
Gary Marino. The Sewer Authority Committee recommends favorable action.
Can you move that, Councilman Lattiser?
I move favorable action on Gary Marino for a reappointment to the Sewer Authority.
Second by Councilman Gephardt. Any questions that were not asked during appointments? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt.
Yes.
Mr. Howe.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. McElroy.
Yes.
Mr. Rix.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. The reappointment passes. Next up is the Sewer Border Review Committee Report, appointments.
Carter Thomas. Committee recommends favorable action.
Councilman Lattiser, can you?
Uh, Carter Thomas, committee recommends favorable action.
Uh, Councilman Lattiser, can you move that for me, please?
Move favorable action on the appointment of Carter Thomas to the sewer board of review.
Thank you, second by Councilman Gephardt. Any questions that were not asked during appointments earlier this evening? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you very much. Um, if there is no objection, I would like to, um, bypass, uh, for now, we're going to pause on PCR 31-22, and I'd like to go to the, uh, public hearings. Uh, is there any objections from members of the council on that? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we are now going to move to, uh, referred business. Number one is PCO 2-22, an ordinance relative, uh, to the amendment of, uh, the comprehensive plan of 2013 through 2033 of the City of Warwick. So, um, this is, uh, for first passes, this is for a public hearing. Um, Councilman Ricks, can you, um, make a motion to open a public hearing?
Move to open public hearing.
Second by Councilman Howe and Councilman Lattiser and Councilman Gephardt. Okay, at this time, is there someone from the administration who would like to, uh, present PCO 2-22? Again, I just want to go over, uh, real quick. Um, please, everybody, um, when you come to the mic, um, you got to really get in there. It's, it's tough to hear in here. Um, identify yourself. Clearly, we have a stenographer this evening and the city clerk, uh, needs it, uh, for the record as well. Um, how this is going to, um, proceed is we are going to have a presentation from the planning director or the administration. I will then ask the council members if they have any questions or, or, um, statements to make. Then we will move to the public hearing part. We will ask people, uh, to speak for this ordinance. Then we will ask for people to come up to speak that would like to speak against this ordinance. Then we will open it up to general, if you'd just like to have it make a statement on the ordinance. Then we will close the public hearing and then, um, the, um, the council will, uh, make a motion. So again, there's two different public hearings this evening. This one right now is just on PCO 2-22 regarding the comprehensive plan. So, uh, the planning director is going to explain the comprehensive plan. The ordinance for the solar will come next, so we're going to try to just keep this on PCO 2-22. Uh, Director?
Thank you, uh, Council President. Tom Kravitz, the city planning director, uh, City of Warwick. Uh, when I was first hired in August 23rd, this was the first item I jumped into, um, at the mayor's request. Uh, there was a draft, um, ordinance, uh, on solar that was being, uh, the process had not yet been completed. It's close to being completed, uh, but I was asked to take a look at that and I did. And through the course of working with staff and fielding calls from the residents, um, it was clear that there was some concern about which zoning districts' solar, commercial solar, could potentially, uh, take place in. Now, the city has existing solar fields, there's three of them in the city. As part of the due diligence, we, uh, researched the history of how those came to be. Uh, they, they happened through the zoning amendment process. Uh, we learned that, we looked at the ordinance as it was drafted and, and we decided to simplify it. Um, before I get into the ordinance though, the comprehensive plan, um, was very silent on solar altogether. So we knew that we needed to put some language in the comprehensive plan, uh, that spoke to the policies generally, which is the guiding, the comprehensive plans are the guiding land use documents for your city as a whole. So they look at a lot of things. And, um, it's important to amend the comprehensive plan first to, um, speak to, in some cases, the zoning ordinances, which are the tools that cities and towns use to implement their comprehensive plans. Seeing the comp plan had very little, if any, language on solar, we put some in. And we, we figured out what to write after having, uh, several meetings. The mayor and I hosted a workshop at the police station, I think it was October 8th. It was the first time we jumped into it. And, and we just basically acted as a sounding board for the residents and really tried to fine-tune what it is people felt they wanted to see as far as solar goes in the city. The comp plan changes are simple, um, they're on the website. Um, basically what they do is they try to utilize, uh, the developed property in the city first. Uh, I'm thinking of Bald Hill Road and other commercial areas like that that have big parking lots and big buildings. And, and it looks to put solar in those environments. Um, and, and the major change that came out of the process, uh, was also to prohibit the commercial, uh, scale zoning in the residential, uh, areas as well as open space areas. Um, and so the comp plan speaks to that. Again, I'm not going to belabor it, there's a lot of you here to speak, I'm, we're here to let you, uh, speak. If there's any questions of me, I'll be here, I'm going to do this again for the zoning ordinance when we get to that item. Um, but it, by way of procedure, I will mention, uh, should the city council, uh, adopt the comp plan, uh, it gets adopted first and then the zoning code that we've written, the zoning ordinance, is, uh, found to be consistent with this new comp plan we've written. And then from here, the comp plan, uh, and the zoning policy, in particular the comp plan, goes to statewide planning for, for approval. But it's important to note that the city can work by its comp plan that it adopts, should it adopt it. And, and when it goes to the state, it could, it'll be several months before we head back from that. So I'll leave it at that for now, uh, Council President.
Thank you very much, Director. Uh, I also just want to make a knowledge of the Sergeant of Arms here, uh, Mr. Wells. He is here, um, he's handing out, uh, the, um, agendas. If you have any questions, you can go, uh, o-over to him as well on the, on the process. Uh, he is here to assist the residents as well. So at this time, are there any, oh, I do like to make a, a quick, um, uh, statement. Unfortunately, Councilman Sinapi was unable to attend this evening, um, but he, he has reached out to me, uh, he, he tried his best, unfortunately, he couldn't make it here. Um, I do want to commend Councilman Sinapi for his work on this issue. He has been working on solar-related issues and ordinances for a number of years. Uh, he is, he's worked hard, um, to try to meet with as many people on, on this, on both sides, on all sides of this issue. Um, so I just want to acknowledge Councilman Sinapi's work on, on this issue. Uh, ordinances need two passages. So, um, if this were to move this evening, that would be first passage, but any ordinance to become law would need two passages. Uh, so Councilman Sinapi will have an opportunity, uh, to be heard on this, on the record and be able to vote, um, if this were to come back again. But I do want to make special acknowledgement of, of Councilman Sinapi and his work on this, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here, um, this evening. As with, um, uh, Councilwoman Travis, uh, uh, unfortunately, a last-minute, uh, situation came up. Um, the councilwoman really wanted to be here, uh, this evening, um, but, uh, she's unable to join us. But again, I want to make it clear that, um, both Councilwoman, uh, Sinapi, I mean, Councilwoman Sinapi and Councilwoman Travis will have an opportunity to speak on this if it were to move one way or the other. Um, and anything would take, uh, two passages. Um, so I just wanted to acknowledge my colleagues who, uh, both been working, unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but have been working on this issue. Uh, any members of the council? Councilman Howe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say very quickly that I commend the planning department and the director, uh, Tom, for the work he's done. I want to thank and commend the citizens who got involved and expressed their concerns and then over the last week, sent me numerous emails in support of the work that the city and the constituents did together. And, uh, at this time, from reading what I've read and talking to the department and talking to the citizens, I'd just like to say that this seems like a very well-put-together, uh, uh, ordinance and I plan on being in full support of it to save a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Howe. Councilman Ricks?
Councilman Howe said it succinctly and I concur with him.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Gephardt?
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President. So, um, often things come before us here and, and they've evolved in, in previous committees and the planning board and the zoning board, and then we kind of get a packet and then we have to figure out what happened in the past. I've been, uh, fortunate, as have a number of my colleagues, to have been sort of part of this process as it's bounced along from the public meetings, um, from the original ordinance that we all reviewed and talked about with our, our, our past planner, um, and then this new process with our new planner. Um, I have to say that the, the process as a whole, um, has, uh, you know, made me really, um, proud of our city, um, and proud of our residents for getting involved and speaking up, um, and for affecting change, um, and in a time when people are so down on government and, um, feel as though their voices aren't heard, I think this is a perfect example of their voices being heard. Um, so I'm, uh, happy to be here tonight to support, um, to support this measure. Um, I'll also say that this first step, um, in terms of amending the comprehensive plan, for anyone who's not familiar with the comprehensive plan, is an unbelievable place to start in terms of your, uh, knowledge and understanding of the vision of the city. Um, it's 334 pages, so you, you know, don't endeavor to do it in a night, but, um, it does talk about what, um, the, the plan is for the city and, and beyond just land use. Um, and it does provide a roadmap. We're at, um, this needs to be updated every 10 years, we are at the, uh, the twilight of this comprehensive plan. So there'll be a, a whole nother effort coming in the next few years to, to update this and to think about, um, the things that maybe weren't a factor, um, 10, or 10 years ago. Um, and so I encourage, you know, everyone who's here today to, to get involved in that process as well, because it's really, uh, it's important, it's how the zoning and planning, um, uh, departments and committees make their decisions, it's how we all make our decisions. Uh, so, uh, thank you for coming out in support of it and, uh, I, I, I look forward to, to the dialogue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gephardt. Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. President. So my colleagues have spoken quite eloquently to PCO 2-22. I just, I'd just like to add at this time that I also will be supporting, um, this amendment, um, in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lattiser. Any other questions from members of the council? Okay, at this time, we, uh, have the public hearing. I'm going to ask, uh, for individuals who would like to speak in favor of, again, this is just PCO 2-22, just on the comprehensive plan. Uh, we're going to ask you to line up and, and speak at the microphone. Um, the Sergeant of Arms will turn the mic on for you. Please try to speak directly into the mic, um, and state your name as clearly as possible, uh, for the stenographer and the, in the city clerk. Uh, we do ask that your comments, uh, be as brief and informative as possible so we can allow as many individuals, uh, to speak on these subjects. So at this time, is there anyone to speak in favor of PCO, uh, 2-22? Go ahead, sir.
Uh, good evening, Council President McAllister and esteemed city council members. My name is A.J. Panday and I'm a resident of Country View Drive in Ward Eight. Um, I was a little thrown off on how we're going to do this tonight. I was going to read my support for both PCO 2-22 and 3-22, but I will reserve, I'll come back up, you'll see me in a few minutes. So I just want to say I support, um, uh, the comp plan changes for PCO 2-22. And it has been a long journey to get here. A lot of residents have taken time, along with the planning board and this administration, so, um, I, I support this and I hope you will take a vote on this tonight and vote it in favor. Thank you and I'll see you in a few minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jane Kenny Austin. I reside at 26 Narragansett Bay Avenue. In light of the positive comments, I just simply want to go on the record here briefly that, um, I support the proposed comp plan changes. Uh, they're important, they're for, for reasons. They both update the plan to reflect a major new land use that provides a solid foundation for future zoning policies and decisions. They identify the land use trade-offs that are implicit in solar development and give guidance on setting a good balance in the future. They also incorporate the lessons that have been learned from the construction and operation of Warwick's three existing solar, um, facilities. And it also promotes, uh, a more streamlined approach to permitting accessory solar in the preferred industrial and commercial areas. And I think the groundwork laid in the comprehensive plan, uh, is extremely important and commend these changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bob Olberg from, uh, 150 Panto Road, and I strongly support the, uh, the new comp plan amendment and am grateful for the inclusive process that, uh, that engaged the public in this, this issue. I welcome the additional protection that it identifies for farmlands, forests and open space. And I also appreciate that it acknowledges that federal and state tax incentives have put pressure on, on those, this valuable land. And, um, finally, I appreciate that it acknowledges that solar does have a place in Warwick and in the right settings, that it's an opportunity for Warwick to do its part to help mitigate the effects of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Rebecca Loignon. Can you hear me?
Uh, one more time, if you could say your name.
Rebecca Loignon, 49 Sophia Drive, Ward Eight.
Uh, Rebecca, we couldn't hear you last. Thank you.
Right, this is brief because I combined, um, PCO 2-22 and 3-22 in one statement. So I just wanted to come here right at this point and say I am in total support of PCO 2-22. And that, I'll, I'll do the rest of it for 3-22. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you soon. Good evening, sir.
Good, good evening. Uh, my name is Rich Hittner. I live at, uh, 326 Thames Avenue in Warwick. Um, I sent an email to the council, uh, early today or yesterday, anyway. Uh, I wasn't sure if I would be able to make it. I'm certainly in favor of this, uh, rec, this recommend change. Uh, and I think that, uh, I have had a, uh, a career in the environmental science and engineering field, uh, and I think this is a, uh, a logical way for a suburban area to approach this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Yeah, my name is Gary Gliotone. I live at 28. Uh, my name is Gary Gliotone. I work, uh, live at 283 Blue Ridge Road in Warwick. Um, I appreciate the council, um, hearing the voices of the public in regard to this issue and I am strongly in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, can you just spell your name, uh, for the record?
Uh, yes. Uh, G-L-I-O-T-T-O-N-E.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, city council members. Um, I just want to thank you for the, for the work that you guys are doing and I want to thank all the, the citizens. I've been involved in politics and it's, it's terrible when you hear somebody complain about something and they don't, they don't do anything about it and get involved. So I am in favor of the proposed work that's been done against solar being used in, in open field and residential areas. So thank you.
Thank you. And sir, can we just get your name for the record?
Uh, Timothy Perpall. P-E-R-P-A-L-L. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Michael. For the stenographer, M-I-C-H-A-E-L. Last name, Zaram. Again, for the stenographer, Z Lake Zebra. A-R-U-M. My address is 139 North Hampton Street, Warwick Island, 02888. Um, I'm also a member of the Warwick Land Trust and president of a watershed group, but I want to clarify that I'm speaking tonight as a resident. Um, to start off, I want to thank you, Mr. McAllister, as president, for presiding over this meeting. I want to thank all the members of the city council and the public who were here to comment on this tonight. I also want to thank, I personally thank Mr. Tom Kravitz coming in to the city of Warwick and starting this off as one of his first major projects. I want to commend him on that. Um, my comments, I'll, I'll try and be brief, but these are limited to the comp plan amendment. Um, initially, when this started, I spoke to Mr. Kravitz. I also contacted people at statewide planning to make sure that what we did here would be consistent with the state guide plan. And, um, I fully believe that everything that Mr. Kravitz is drafting is before you tonight is fully compliant with the state guide plan. you tonight to vote on, and with that, I want to state for the record that I support and also request favorable action on PCO 2-22, the comprehensive plan amendment. Other than that, the only thing I want to mention is that Rhode Island General Law, which is Title 45, it's in Chapter 22.2, the Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Use Act, requires that legislation reflect, and the comp plan reflect the goals and policies of the community. And I think everybody that's going to vote on this tonight knows that everybody, everybody behind me has worked diligently for months to get this where it is today, and it does reflect the goals and policies of the community. I also know that standing behind me to oppose this is a representative from ISM Solar, and I do want to point out, they have had the opportunity before the planning board to submit their own comprehensive plan amendment, which was rejected by the planning board, and I would ask you to follow the recommendation letter that came from the planning board in approving PCO 2-22 as it's written and presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michelle Comar, Ward 1 resident. I strongly support PCO 2-22. I'm really up here for some thank yous. Director Kravitz's work was unprecedented in going forward headfirst when he just got newly hired, and he's worked diligently for hours. And I thank Mayor Pacozzi for recognizing the need to come back to the citizens and develop an ordinance, a comp plan and ordinance that the Warwick residents really wanted to envision and to maintain the character of the city of the Warwick. And I thank the planning board, who gave unanimous favorable advisory opinion on the comp plan amendments you see before you tonight. They gave the green light all away, and I gotta say, this is my new tribe. I met so many wonderful people in this process that got involved in their community, and I hope this continues for other issues that we have important value in the city of Warwick. So I thank everyone in the council tonight. I heard your voices of support. I thank you for that. I know it was, it's been a long process, and I think we all learned together about how a process could work well, and also for the content of these ordinances. I do have one question that I request be answered, is what, if this were to pass first passes tonight, what would be the date of second passage? Okay, thank you very much.
Barbara Walsh, 62 Frederick Street, Ward 2. I am absolutely thrilled to be speaking in favor of passage of this ordinance. A lot of you know me, I'm a political junkie, I love government, I love to listen to you and how you debate the issues. I can't tell you how pleased I am tonight to support your efforts and the efforts of citizens that have been going on for months, putting in hundreds of hours. Earlier, you talked about political, I'm sorry, community participation and supporting commissions and boards. This has been an informal effort by dozens and dozens of people to take positions and work through the issues and debate and consider and be thoughtful. And they really, everybody deserves a real pat on the back for the efforts they've put into the future of Warwick. In helping them to frame that, I really want to support the mayor's effort and Mr. Kravitz's effort in framing this bill before you tonight. As written, it needs to be passed. It is thorough, it is comprehensive, and it is incredibly thoughtful in terms of what Warwick needs in the future. In my experience, I've worked for state government for over 30 years, and I saw what statewide planning often went through in their efforts to be thoughtful in a future orientation, not what practitioners need to know about doing their jobs today, but how to think about the future of the state, and in this case, in Warwick. I think planning folks don't get the credit they often deserve, and I really want us to be grateful and supportive to the planning department and Mr. Kravitz and the mayor for allowing this to go forward, and I hope you support their efforts. And I appreciate your efforts in being so thoughtful about this. So I am in full support of this, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Earl Simpson, 62 Frederick Street, Ward 2. Barbara's my wife, she usually does the talking for us. But I feel strongly about this. This is, this has been an effort that started back last, I'm trying to think of when it started, in August, when you folks were considering the last solar zoning ordinance. And a group of people got together and said, this doesn't look right. This is not what the community wants. And a group of citizens got together, started working on this, and got actively involved in the process. A lot of us who haven't been involved in politics before got actively involved in this process. The comprehensive plan has a lot of community involvement in it, and that's what it's supposed to do, and Mike Zaram said that. And so I would urge you to pass this. It's what the community wants, it's a good thing for Warwick, it's smart solar development for Warwick. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of PCO 2-22 from the public? Is there anyone to like to speak in favor of PCO 2-22 here this evening? Is there anyone that would like to speak against PCO 2-22 at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Karen Browning. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Decatell Law with offices in Providence and Newport. I practice land use, planning, and zoning law. One of the fundamental premises of zoning law is that when you pass a zoning ordinance, or in this case, a zoning ordinance amendment, it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. What's interesting tonight is that you're passing or considering to pass both a zoning amendment and a comprehensive plan amendment. I find that problematic from a procedural standpoint. The reason, again, is because amendment has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's the comprehensive plan that exists today, not the one that you amend so that it becomes consistent with the amendment you're trying to make. So for purposes of the record, I think it's important to note that procedurally, the process is flawed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against PCO 2-22 at this time? Is there anyone to speak against PCO 2-22 at this time? Is there any members of the public that would like to make any statement on PCO 2-22 at this time? That hasn't already spoken? Any member of the public who would like to speak on 2-22 that hasn't already spoken? Okay, sir?
Again, for the record, Michael Zaram, Z-A-R-U-M, 139 North Hampton Street, Warwick, Rhode Island. I did want to just add a follow-on to the comments made in opposition about comprehensive plan amendment coming before the ordinance change, and I believe the city is following the proper procedure. I've researched this with statewide planning before, when this whole process got kicked off. As far as how far in advance the comp plan amendment had to be done, whether it could be done concurrent, or they had to be passed on separate dates, the opinion I got from statewide planning is the city of Warwick is following the proper procedure here. And again, I would request that, as Mr. Kravitz did, that the vote be first on the comprehensive plan amendment, followed by the vote on the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals that would like to speak on this subject, PCO 2-22? Are there any other individuals that would like to speak? Okay, at this time, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Councilman Rix.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second by Councilman Howe, Councilman McElroy, Councilman Foley. Do we need a voice vote? Voice vote. All those in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any objections or abstentions? Okay. Hearing none. Are there any members of the council that would like to speak on PCO 2-22? Are there any members of the council that would like to make a motion on PCO 2-22? Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley, Councilman McElroy, Councilman Gephardt, Councilman Lattis, sir. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. The clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattis?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rix?
Yes.
Seven yes, first passage.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. PCO 2-22 has been favorable action, it's been passed for first passage. Next up is PCO 3-22 in ordinance on solar. Can I get a motion to open a public hearing on PCO 3-22? Councilman Howe.
Move to open public hearing.
Second by Councilman Foley. All those in favor to open a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay. So just to review, we are going to follow the same process as we did for the last public hearing. We are going to have the administration present, members of the city council can ask questions or make statements, then we will ask the members of the public. Again, we will do speaking for, individuals will line up, speaking against individual lineup, and any individual who would like to speak after that. Then we will close the public hearing, and then the council can act. So, Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the advisory opinion from the planning board.
Director, I'm sorry, it's a new public hearing, so if you could just introduce yourself again for the record.
Oh, sorry. Tom Kravitz, City Planning Director. So as part of the zoning amendment process, the planning board must report back to the city council, and they've done so through, I've crafted a memorandum here dated February 1, 2022, and it cites the proper findings with respect to the newly adopted comprehensive plan, to which it demonstrates that this new solar ordinance is consistent. And simply stated, the ordinance, it recognizes, again, this is somewhat repetitive, but the policy, this is the zoning, the zoning codes are used as tools, they're the toolbox through which the planning board implements land use in your community on a monthly basis. So this ordinance, what it does is it encourages solar in the built environment, as I said before, in your big box areas, your existing commercial areas, it supports solar as accessory use solar in residential situations. You can still put it on your rooftop, you can put it in your yard, as long as it's adequately screened. All commercial properties can use it as accessory as well. And those situations, actually, the planning board, from what I learned through talking with the development community that develops solar, in my experience in other towns, the incentives are really geared towards putting up these solar fields in the, in greenfield sites, or forested sites. And it's challenging to put them in commercial environments, namely, we're encouraging solar canopies by way of parking lots, if you're going to put them in parking lots, or on atop roofs of large big boxes. Canopies, of course, come with steel, they're expensive, so we're trying to make it, the ordinance tries to make it easier for the developers in those cases to just go to the building department and get a permit to put up the canopy in the parking lots. This is one of the things we talked about early on in the zoning code. When you think about it, you're really not, you're not changing stormwater, per se, you know, you're probably sacrificing a few parking spaces. As long as the facilities are adequately lighted, you know, in this proper snow removal in those rare circumstances where we get big storms, it's something that we're trying to encourage. We've got a lot of pavement in certain parts of Warwick, so it made sense to go after that area first. The, the, another key provision is in the use table, which is on page two, the, the section 608 in the use table, it was defined as electric power plant. That, that section is being deleted and rewritten for the accessory use solar canopies. So that's consistent with what we're trying to do in the city. The ordinance does look at existing contaminated sites, known as brownfield sites. A lot of times, if residents abut these areas, they look undeveloped, they look forested, but there was historical use that may be contaminated the property. Those situations could be home to a commercial solar array. This ordinance supports that, and it has a bunch of standards that the planning board looks at to try to control everything with respect to, you know, the visibility, mainly is the main one, but they even do, you know, noise decibel readings if there is some noise from the inverters. In this, we look at decommissioning, there's a whole number of things in here, which, it's on the web, I won't belabor it. Let me just quickly go through, make sure I got everything. Yeah, there's provisions for maintenance enforcement, inspection, and there's the amendments to the accessory use section in zoning as well. So, you know, without, again, going on, I'm here to answer any questions, maybe we open up the hearing and, and address the solar zoning policy too. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. As I know some of my colleagues have already mentioned, that this has been an interactive process here. We started in one direction, we heard from the public, we paused, and we, the administration had some public hearings, input, went through the planning process, and now it's back before the city council. So I just want to commend everybody that has been involved in this. Again, some of my colleagues worked very hard on this, and unfortunately, weren't being able to be here tonight, but I do want to acknowledge them, Councilman Sinapi and Councilwoman Travis. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I also would like to go on record as commending Councilman Sinapi, and once again, on this ordinance, very well done, and I have to, again, rubber stamp what I said before, the input from the public is so important, and I got some great input, and the input was overwhelming. I plan on supporting this ordinance as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Once again, I completely agree. Thank you to the members of the public who participated in this process to make this legislation better, and thank you to Councilman Sinapi and to our planning director, really everyone in the planning department who worked on this. Thank you.
Councilman Lattis, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what I see that's been taking place for quite some time and is taking place again this evening, this is democracy. That's what this is about. It's about democracy, and it's about good, responsible governance. Hats off to you, Mr. President, as well as my colleagues on the city council, and to the planning board for having the resolve to take a step back, to listen to the people, to hear what they said, not to be afraid or intimidated to take a step back and say, we need to take another look. What has taken place between Mayor Pacozzi, his administration, the planning department, Director Kravitz, the planning board, and this city council has truly has truly fallen under the definition of we the people, for the people. The... I've sat here going on ten years now and we're coming up to our tenth budget. There's only been one other time when I have seen this council chamber filled with so many concerned, focused, dedicated members of the city of Warwick. We don't have this turnout at the budget hearings. It's a three hundred and thirty million dollar budget. The public, the members of the public that have come before us have been extremely professional, very respectful, totally focused, extremely well-prepared. And it is truly a pleasure as one of your elected officials to be sitting here this evening and experiencing democracy in action. The people at work, we need to hear from all of you. We need to hear from you on the issues. And we have issues that will be coming up in the future. We need to hear your voice because you do make a difference. And it's been proven, it's, you've proved it. You have proved that, planning department has proved that the mayor's office has proved that Mayor Pecosi, the council president and the city council, and as they've also acknowledged, um, Councilman Sinapi, who put in an incredible amount of time into this, as well as Councilwoman Travis. So I personally want to thank every single person in every single department that has been involved in this. And I want you to know that I will be supporting PCO three dash twenty-two, and I look forward to continuing, um, this process that has, has evolved as a result of this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other members of the council like to speak at this time? Okay, uh, hearing none, we're going to, um, open up to the public. Again, we are going to go with the same process. We're going to ask individuals that would like to speak for PCO three twenty-two to come up first. Then we will ask people who are speaking against PCO three dash twenty-two to speak, and then we will, uh, open it up for anyone who would like to speak on it one way or the other. So at this time, and, uh, please line up. Um, anyone that would like to speak in for, again, please get ready in the microphone, slowly say your name for the record, and I could help if everyone spells their name as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm back. I'm A.J. Pandey, uh, Country View Drive, Ward Eight. It's P-A-N as in Nancy D. David E. Edward. Uh, I'm here again to express my support for the solar zoning regulation PCO three dash twenty-two as recommended by the Warwick Planning Board. After many months of immersive learning about solar energy and the city's role in determining the best path forward for solar development, I'm proud to be here today and stand with the hundreds of Warwick residents who have made their voices heard. The document before you tonight were developed with extensive input from experts and overwhelming support from Warwick residents. Um, we had seventy-five people who filled the community room at the police station for Mayor Pecosi and the planning department's, Mr. Kravitz', uh, informational meeting back in October of twenty twenty-one. Uh, then we had residents who packed the city council chamber in November, where in addition to an extensive public testimony, the council was presented with a signed petition of more than two hundred and forty residents opposing the original and highly permissive solar ordinance. This administration took the time to pause and implement a moratorium. So we had a little bit more time to get this ordinance right. Then dozens of citizens publicly spoke in support of the changes to the comp plan and the solar amendment, the solar ordinance, at the planning board's meetings, both in person and via Zoom in December and January. And at that meeting, the planning board received over a hundred levels, a hundred letters of support. It's well documented that trees are proven to remove CO2 from the atmosphere and protecting intact forests and large open green spaces is critical to reducing the impacts, impacts of global warming. We must develop a two-fold approach. We need to develop green spaces to reduce emissions, and we need to create renewable energy spaces on existing land zoned for commercial and industrial use. What we don't need is a quick fix that supports solar developers for short-term economic gains. The ordinance that you have before you tonight says yes to smart solar development and protects forests and open spaces. From Canymica to Coesit and every neighborhood in between, Warwick residents have let their opinions be known. We are ready for smart solar solutions in Warwick, but not at the expense of deforestation, the elimination of green spaces, and certainly not at the expense of destroying our neighborhoods. Today I ask you to please do the right thing and put residents first and choose a smart solar strategy and vote in favor of PCO three dash twenty-two as presented by this planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, A.J. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Derrick, Ward Four. I'm also chairman of the Warwick Land Trust, but, um, I'm here to speak as a resident of Warwick. And I just wanted to let you know, I just traveled through ten cities over the last month, and I sat at the window seat so I could see what I, what was down below. And, uh, there are very few solar farms that I saw. I saw a lot on the, on the, uh, roofs of, of the manufacturing facilities and large places, but there were also a lot of carports. And when I got to Mexico, I didn't see one solar field, but I did see a lot of canopies, lots and lots of canopies. And we really, as a city, ought to be promoting that in some way or another. Um, I also want to mention that Los Angeles has a law that if you're going to be changing your home or going to be making an addition onto your home, you must add solar panels. We as a city could be doing the same thing as well. And so any new construction and have no exceptions. I just think it's a novel idea. And also, when I flew back from California, I noticed there were three people behind me, and as we were flying into, uh, Providence, they saw at Block Island, they saw the, the, um, turbines, and they were going, oh, what are those turbines doing out there? What a sad, you know, sad thing to see. And then they saw the solar panels and they started saying, oh my gosh, look at all the solar panels. Now, they did not know me, and I didn't pass them a note or anything, but they were really into commenting, and they were, it's all negative. But I also wanted to comment that according to the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, this is done in twenty twenty-one, um, there's now a hundred and fifty-five, there were as of twenty twenty, a hundred and fifty-five large-scale projects dotting the small state and producing only seventy-three megawatts, megawatts of energy. The largest of is a four-hundred-acre forest that was clear-cut in Riddleberry Hill, which was a huge habitat for rare species. And according to the Rhode Island Department of Energy, of Environmental Management, rather, DEM, um, more than a thousand acres of forestry have been clear-cut for solar panels in the state of Rhode Island. And only two-thirds of the forests were cut for development. In Warwick alone, they're looking at doing over more than five hundred acres. With the city of Warwick can only receive five dollars a kilowatt hour. And now when you do the math, and there's seventy-three thousand kilowatts in the seventy-three megawatts, so there's seventy-three thousand, times five dollars is three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year. That's all the city is going to be making. And this is for over a thousand acres of solar panels. Each year that number goes down as the panels deteriorate. Facts are facts. Let's look for better ways to install solar and leave our forests and open space alone. Thank you very much. And I also want to say, I couldn't have been happier with the city council and Mayor Pecosi and Director Kravitz for all of the, uh, positive feedback we had from them in taking care of what we thought was important to the city. And I'm proud to live in this city when I see all these changes in democracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, um, Mr. President, members of the city council. Um, my name's Nathan Cornell. I'm a member of Warwick Land Trust and a member of the Warwick School Committee. I'm here to speak in favor of PCO three dash twenty-two. This force was put together with fruit involvement of many residents who put a lot of time to get this right. And, um, and as, and also this ordinance also has protections for old growth trees and forests, so it'll protect rare forest ecosystems. And as, um, also as Councilman Lattiser stated earlier, like, this is a democratic ordinance, which is opposed to some of the more kleptocratic ordinances found in other parts of city, uh, other parts of the state, um, which has allowed for hundreds of acres to be cut down and, um, has destroyed many forest ecosystems. So, um, this ordinance can be a model to the...
Excuse me, sir. You just got to speak a little slower. She, she can't pick up.
Okay, my apologies. Yes, so, so to, to wrap up, so, um, this ordinance can be a model to the, uh, entire state, uh, because this ordinance, uh, makes sure to, to balance the protection of our forests and rare ecosystems while also allowing for solar areas on areas where they're supposed to be, which is already developed areas. So I'm completely in support of this ordinance, and I think the council members are already voicing, um, support for this. And, um, I think this will be, we can be, could put work on a map with this because this is a great ordinance and, um, this will do a lot of good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bob Oberg. Uh, I've lived in Ward Eight for thirty-nine years. Uh, I strongly support the new, uh, solar zoning regulations that the planning board has recommended to the council. I encourage you to approve the ordinance and to oppose any amendments that would permit commercial solar in residential areas or weaken the performance standards. ISM Solar bragged in recent Warwick Beacon articles that they had had considerable influence in drafting the first ordinance. This was discouraging to me because ISM has no ties to this community and no vested interest in our financial health or in the quality of life of our residents. The ordinances we are reviewing tonight... The audience, the, the ordinances that are, we, we are reviewing tonight, by contrast, are a result of a collaboration between citizens and the mayor, the planning director, the planning board, and the city council. I am, IMS Solar continues to act like they have somehow been aggrieved by the city.
Sir, uh, I just, I just want to let you make your statements, but I don't want individual projects, individual businesses to be called out at this time. This is just on PCO three dash twenty-two, the ordinance itself. So if you could just keep the comments, we just want to give everybody the opportunity to speak in favor, but I don't want to start identifying specific businesses, specific individuals. Uh, we need to keep it on PCO three dash, uh, twenty-two, the ordinance itself, not one particular project, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
There, there are claims that, um, i- if this ordinance is passed, that, um, Warwick will be considered an unpredictable place to do business. Um, the truth is that if this ordinance is passed, Warwick will be a more predictable place to live. For working people, purchasing a home is the largest investment they will ever make in a community. In buying or maintaining a home in Warwick, people need the confidence that large-scale solar development won't be built next to them and decrease their property values and reduce their quality of life. Allowing such development would undermine the fundamental protections that residential zoning is intended for. There have been warnings, uh, to the council in the media about the long and short-term unintended consequences of eliminating solar from the city's toolbox. I want to point out for the record that these ordinances do in fact balance the long and term, short-term consequences of solar. By taking a more deliberate approach, Warwick has avoided the unintended consequences that communities across Rhode Island and across the country have faced by being behind in the solar regulation curve. Secondly, the new policies do not eliminate solar from the toolbox. Applying the most conservative estimates from a recent Synapse Energy Economics Report, the policies advanced in the new ordinance could support up to three hundred and fifty megawatts of solar, uh, development on commercial properties, industrial property, contaminated sites, parking lots, and rooftops. In reviewing the ordinances, please consider some of the things other communities have learned about solar the hard way. Utility-grade solar is an inefficient use of prime environmentally valuable land. A report from the National Renewable Energy Laboratory finds that solar development consumes eight-point-nine acres per megawatts. It may be considerably less in Rhode Island because that report focused mostly on southern latitudes of the United States. As, as, um, as another speaker has pointed out, Rhode Island has suffered because of this problem, with over a thousand acres of forest clear-cut in the last four years for solar, which is two-thirds of the amount of forest that we've lost for any developments statewide. There was an article in NBC News yesterday, which I forwarded to the city council, which shows that the ordinances that the council are considering are fully aligned with the leading edge of solar regulation in the United States. If passed, this could be a, provide a model for other communities who are struggling with the issue. In a time when so much of our public discourse is marred by cynicism and distrust, Warwick's process for addressing this complex issue has been a model of civility and public inclusion. As someone who has never been involved in local politics before, it has been a pleasant surprise for me to interact with the mayor, the planner, the city council, and the planning board, and with so many passionate and knowledgeable residents. In closing, I encourage you to vote in favor of PCO three dash twenty-two and to resist any amendments that would weaken it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Senator.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. Um, I had a longer persuasion speech, but it doesn't look like I need it.
Senator.
I've been following, oh, I am from one seventy-four Wingate Ave, Kendra Anderson in Ward Two. Pardon my lack of manners. Um, I've been following this process very closely, and as everyone has said, celebrating the collaborative effort. This is an activist, I've been an environmental activist for over twenty years. It's an activist's dream to have members of the community band together so strongly and then have members of the governmental body that would be in charge of making this process so, and city planning all working together in this magnificent way. Once again, as Councilman Gephardt said, I am so proud to be representing Warwick, and I'm here as a resident as well. Um, it's very important, we need renewable energy, but we need to do it in a responsible way. As everyone has said, we don't need to clear land to be able to, um, adopt solar energy. Although I'm here primarily as a resident, I have the opportunity of being involved with efforts to responsibly cite sol- solar across the state. The, this balanced approach to bringing responsible-sighted solar in Warwick hasn't gone unnoticed. Many of my colleagues from other municipalities are paying attention, and this could become a model through which they can navigate their own, um, difficult regulatory challenges. But I also need to work at the state level to support can... But I also need to work at the state level to support canopy solar, solar on already-created parking lots, with incentives for developers. Developers are incentivized to build on green land, and we need to do more at the state level. So seven years ago, when I was looking for a place to live, I chose Warwick, and I couldn't be prouder. Thank you.
Rebecca Lloyd, 49, Sophia Drive, Ward 8. Okay? I'm a lifelong resident of Warwick. I was born here. I am beyond happy to have been part of this citizen-driven in cooperation with the Planning Department in forming this solar ordinance, PCO 3-22. It makes a huge statement that the people that live here actually matter and are being heard in forming the future of our city. I am respectfully requesting that the councilmen, that my councilman, Mr. Sinapi, and the remaining city council vote in favor of the citizens' hard work and approve PCO 3-22 with no further changes as the six-month moratorium end is growing closer. Thank you for your time and listening to We the People.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. My name is Nina Pandey. I live at 8B Eagle Run in Warwick. I recently moved back to Warwick after living in Providence for nearly 17 years. I made the decision to come back to Warwick largely because of my parents and to most in the room, I'm known affectionately as AJ's little sister. But I also moved back to Warwick because I wanted that residential feel, and it's why I selected to go to a condominium that gave me that park-like setting in the back. I'm excited and in support of PCO 3-22 and have been really encouraged by the words that I've heard from the council here tonight. I'm also encouraged to hear and see that there is this great turnout and support and hope that the residents will continue to work with this body of government to make sure that we're making smart decisions for Warwick. My passion actually is education, so I will dig into those two schools, the high schools that are being proposed. I served for 13 years on the school board in the city of Providence. I can go on about my support, but I'm actually here representing another resident in Warwick. Her name is Crystal Roberts. She lives at 725 East Avenue, Apartment 2, and she has spoken before this member, this board. She actually had to attend a funeral this evening, so she asked if I could read her statement, which I will provide written copies to you, but she would like this in to the public record. Again, "On behalf of Crystal Roberts, I currently reside next to one of the already-installed solar ground arrays. We have seen firsthand the irreparable damages it has caused to the local environment, wildlife, and ecosystem. But not only has this destructive and unnecessary development negatively impacted the environment, but it has also impacted the health, peace, and well-being of my neighbors and myself by way of such hazardous and continuous pulsing noise that can easily be heard emitting at all hours from the solar array's inverter box. I am looking to move from this neighborhood in large part because of the impact that the solar development has had on the enjoyment of my life. This is unfortunate and could have been prevented by having a stronger ordinance in place that would not have allowed for such damaging development. We can find a middle way that allows for development in much-needed renewable energy sources without robbing our communities of the right to peaceful enjoyment of their neighborhoods, access to open and green spaces, forests and wildlife, and a respectful place in the greater ecosystem. The health of the people, wildlife, plants, trees, waterways, and greater environment of Warwick must be the priority, as these are all interconnected. We must not cave into the pressure and threats of solar developers and their near-sighted incentives. The example we set in the legacy of this city must be one that shows that we care about the long-term impacts and not just what is convenient at the time and about the health and enjoyment of future generations. These must be prioritized over what is easy, quick, and profitable. The approval of the new solar zoning regulations, PCO 3-22, is a life-affirming vote. I would love to see the non-development elements of the ordinance applied to existing arrays as well, such as the sections on noise regulations, proper buffer requirements, and prohibition of pesticide use. I am unsure if the existing language would cover the large arrays that have been erected already, but that would be ideal. Thank you so much for your service to our city and for considering my thoughts on these important issues. With respect, Crystal Roberts." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jane Kenny Austin, 26 Narragansett Bay Avenue. I strongly support PCO 3-22. But just briefly note, solar energy siting presents big challenges to any city because it's a new, evolving technology and presents huge land-use trade-offs. And if poorly done, it can consume the city's natural resources, displace other economic activities, and ironically undermine efforts to address climate change. So the city council today has a real opportunity to look at the big picture. Opponents of the ordinance have argued that the council somehow abdicates its responsibility or gives up its power by adopting these ordinances, when in fact, the opposite is true. It's when the council sets the broad strategic parameters for a new land use, or when it considers the future and long-term impacts, when it adds up and considers the real long-term costs and benefits experienced by the community as a whole, and not just in the context of an individual project, that is when the council exercises its greatest power and fulfills its greatest responsibilities. I think this ordinance is a tremendous example of that kind of action by the council. It sets a land-use policy that is appropriate for a complex city like Warwick with its tremendous potential for rooftop and solar canopies in its extensive retail, commercial, and industrial areas. It takes a balanced approach, doesn't sacrifice open space and residential neighborhoods. It reflects the hard lessons learned in other communities. It helps to preserve the city's natural areas and ecosystem services, and it addresses climate change. I appreciate the indications of support that you've given, and I strongly urge passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Mr. President, David Rush, Resident 445 Countryview Drive. I am a member of Valley Country Club, a member of Kent County WMCA, and an avid dog walker. I have walked both properties for 10 years, and whilst this feels like a win and we're going in the right direction for the people, I just wanted to say that on my walks, I see deer, I see birds, recently bobcat, coyotes, and all of those animals thank you for what you pass here this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Timothy Papal, 130 Panto Road, Warwick. I just, I want to thank the city council members and everybody here that really we're passionate about this. And the thing is, we have to, we have to understand, these decisions that we're making are going to be an impact for our children, not us. These things will be really important 20 years from now if we decimate the little land that we have, so I'm definitely in favor of it. It's hard enough for us to get our kids outside to play, let alone start using the open air spaces that we have, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, and all who are here this evening. For the record, again, my name is Michael Zaram. I'm a lifelong resident of Warwick, although I've also lived in Boston and California in different places. I want to thank everybody for coming here this evening and coming together on an issue that I first became aware of several years ago when I attended a meeting in Cranston, and it was on solar. And that was when I first asked for a solar moratorium in Warwick. It didn't catch on at first, but obviously now it's caught on that we have a solar moratorium, and that's given us time to come up with draft legislations that's before you to vote on this evening. I also want to point out that this is not about stopping large-scale solar. It's about smart solar siting and getting it in the right place where it belongs and protecting neighborhoods from where it doesn't belong. I also know that people around the state are watching what the city council does this evening because what's drafted in the legislation before you is being looked at as a potential role model for across the state for smart solar siting, to get solar in the right place where it belongs and actually promote it in areas where it belongs. So with that, I just have a letter for the record, since this is a public hearing, and I request that the letter that I just handed to Mr. Wells be entered as speaking for passage of PCO 3-22. I will read it briefly for the stenographer. From Michael Zaram, 139 North Hampton Street, Warwick, Rhode Island, 02888, dated March 7, 2022. Addressed to Stephen P. McAllister, Chairman, Warwick City Council, and Warwick City Council Members, December, Warwick, at 3275 Post Road. I have a typo on there, but it's Post Road, Warwick, Rhode Island, 02886. Speaking for, subject is public hearing. I'll change it, it's listed as referred, Business Agenda Item Number 2, PCO 3-22, Appendix A zoning amendment. What I have to say to the city council is, dear Mr. Chairman McAllister and members of the Warwick City Council, I strongly support and I request favorable action and a vote to approve PCO 3-22, Appendix A zoning amendment, solar ordinance. I hereby request favorable action and a vote to approve that subject legislation before you this evening. The favorable action requested for Appendix A zoning amendment are for a much-needed solar regulatory ordinance. It is compliant with Rhode Island General Law Title 45, Chapter 22-2, Rhode Island Comprehensive Planning and Land Used Act, especially in that this legislation diligent reflects the goals and the policies of the community, allowing them to hear this evening to ensure that we have a balanced future growth, and we have development for conservation of Warwick's natural and cultural resources, and also addresses smart solar siting to get solar development in the right place. I also want to mention that your passage of the subject legislation will put the city of Warwick, city of Warwick officials on the state map as leaders in this state of solar siting law and policy, and is an excellent roadmap for our community. The reason I mention that is I know that people in other communities are looking what's before you tonight, and if it's passed, I'm going to take it and run with it as a model for their communities. And I think this is beneficial to everybody that Warwick has an opportunity tonight if this is passed to become a statewide leader in the eyes of people all across the state of Rhode Island. With that, I would ask you to please vote to approve PCO 3-22, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. Thank you, Michael Zaram, Resident, Ward 2.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara Walsh, 62 Frederick Street, Ward 2. I am overwhelmed by the wealth of expertise and feeling presented to you tonight by our citizens of Warwick. It is just breathtaking, and I am really proud. One of the things I want to say is, I also appreciate all of the work that Councilperson Sinapi put into working on this bill. I've worked with him and Councilman Ricks on a different set of ordinances that will be coming before you in the future, and can say with no hesitancy, the amount of work that they put into these processes is just truly amazing, and they are gracious and accepting of comments. But in this case, Councilman Sinapi is wrong. I say that with much respect, but I completely disagree with not supporting this bill. This bill is really critical for what we want to have in Warwick for our quality of life. One of the things I think we need to remember is that zoning represents a value system for what we can expect in the way we live, wherever we live. Zoning says we can do and not do certain things where we live. Sometimes I think we pretend that our property is sacrosanct. We can do whatever we want to do. It's our property. Yes, we can cut down a tree, we can put up a fence, but there are certain things we can't do. You tell us that by adhering to zoning. If that weren't the case, Councilman Ricks would have been hearing from me over the past few years because I want a miniature donkey on my property. And I, and I'm serious. I'd really love a very small herd of goats, two or three, but I can't have them. And so I've never asked to have them because zoning says I can't. So I want to know that if I'm in a residential area, not only do people not have all kinds of exotic creatures, which maybe I'd support, maybe I wouldn't, but I don't want in the, you know, the open space that I abut to have a pyrolysis plant. I don't want to have the Breville Power Plant. I don't want permitting by a town council or a DEM siting board to allow such commercial utility-grade installations in open space or residential property, which is in my own neighborhood or abutting my neighborhood anywhere in the city. And the city is where I live, not just Ward 2. I don't abut Ward 8, but I care about Ward 8. And I want to respect the zoning regs when they're reasonable, and I want to come before you when they're not, and have you take with great seriousness the pros and cons, the cost-benefit analysis of what we do and what we don't do where we live. And so zoning has to provide some degree of reliability that what is zoned residential stays residential. I tried to buy another piece of property about 20 years ago. My husband and I looked all over the state at several dozen properties. I wanted a bigger lot, I wanted a different kind of house. We could have purchased any property we looked at. And after three years, we decided there was nothing out there that was really any better for what we were looking for. We changed our house, and now I'm planting all kinds of native trees on my property, which I have a right to do, and have a little refuge in the backyard for the types of native species that I want to encourage. And we stayed in Warwick. I've been in my house 63 years. My family have been in that house for decades and decades and decades. And so I want to know that zoning provides some- And so I want to know that zoning provides some predictability, and there will not be commercial utilities in my neighborhood on residential properties or open space properties. So thank you for supporting that.
Thank you very much. I do just want to make one comment, that I do not believe that Councilman Sinapi has taken a position. He is not here to defend himself or give his position, so I just want to put that on the record. Councilman Sinapi will be able to address this if it comes back here, but I just do want to make that point, that I do not believe that Councilman Sinapi has made a formal position public.
Can I respond to that? I asked him directly after one of the public hearings.
Okay, but he hasn't made a public comment on it, so I'm going to ask that we move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
Earl Simpson, Frederick Street, Ward 2. A lot's been talked about this as a solar siting bill, ordinance, excuse me, used to the state bills, solar siting ordinance. But this ordinance does more than just talk about where solar siting can be. It talks about how it needs to be managed, maintained, taken care of, and finally, when it's decommissioned, what happens to it when it's hit its useful purpose. But the one small part I think that I contributed to this was to talk about when it is decommissioned, it needs to be recycled. The city should not get, and that the funds that would need to be used to recycle those solar panels, need to be deposited upfront, so that the city does not risk 30 years from now, when any solar installation in the city, it becomes a liability for the city, to take it down and to deal with it. And so I became aware of this, because I have a faculty member who studies brownfields, and he wrote a sabbatical request to go to Ghana to study what was happening in their brownfields there, because solar panels were being tossed into landfills, they were breaking apart, and they were leaching toxic chemicals into the landfill. And so my point here is that this is not just where solar goes, but all aspects of solar within the city. And so it's a great bill. I hope you support PCO 3-22. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Shel Komer, Ward 1, and I agree with the comments before me from Warwick citizens, and I strongly support PCO 3-22. Director Kravitz touched on the history of this ordinance, and up to the moratorium that the council voted in in November, and actually 20 days after that, that was the appeal period, any solar developer could have filed an application for a solar project in Warwick. And we have three of them that went through the existing process, and that existing process was in place up to the moratorium. I don't believe we've had any solar projects approved since then. So now we go forward with a solar ordinance that was greatly needed. We didn't have one in Warwick, and we had this new technology that was expanding statewide. So we needed the solar ordinance, we need your vote tonight to get that process started. And hopefully we'll get it started tonight with second passage following soon. This is a citywide ordinance, it's not project-specific. I live in Ward 1, I'm not a NIMBY, but I do enjoy our open spaces, our forested areas, our farmlands in Warwick. That shapes the character of the community I live with, and I hope that continues. So I urge the council to fully support PCO 3-22, and I thank you so much for your support.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of PCO 3-22? Is there anyone that would like to speak against PCO 3-22? Good evening.
Good evening. Again, Attorney Karen Browning, on behalf of ISM Solar. I would like to incorporate my comments made a little while ago under the comp plan portion of tonight's agenda, just for purposes of the record. Briefly to summarize, as stated, the council does need comprehensive plan consistency before it can pass a zoning amendment. The fact that you're doing both tonight means that the current comp plan, as approved by statewide planning, does not have the needed changes in it yet. The two are therefore inconsistent. In addition, the draft ordinance as written will restrict the uses of larger-sized parcels, in the city, parcels of which there are few in number. Respectfully, ISM would argue that this ordinance and its focus on only these larger-sized parcels, if passed, would rise to the level of overtaking of such property owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President McAllister, and members of the city council, for the opportunity to talk with you briefly this evening. My name is Greg Lucini. I'm CEO of ISM Solar, which is part of the ISM Group. We're a small business that has been headquartered in Providence, Rhode Island, since its founding more than 30 years ago. I completely agree with Councilman Lattes' comment about a democracy, and I agree that this is an excellent, excellent example of it, something that everyone here should be proud of. The problem, though, is that democracies only work when those who are involved and are entitled to vote, whether they are the residents, or in this case, the city council, have all the facts. Because if they're voting based upon incorrect assumptions, that's dangerous. That's what happens in Russia. That's a problem. So for that reason, I'd like to read to you a letter from Steve O'Donnell. This is from Steve O'Donnell, the CEO of the YMCA of Greater Providence. It's addressed to Mr. Councilman McAllister. Dear President McAllister, while I cannot be at this evening's council meeting in person, I write to you respectfully, request that the council delay taking any actions on the proposed solar ordinance until you and your colleagues have the opportunity to tour the proposed solar development at our Kent location and consider the impacts of potential dense residential development. The Kent County YMCA is a cherished institution in Warwick and throughout the West Bay. We serve the community with programs and services designed to support youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. As an organization, we are committed to preserving the quiet, tranquil environment that our members enjoy. However, we must also plan for our long-term success, especially following two years of uncertainty due to the pandemic. For the last several years, we've been working with ISM Solar on a land lease that would create responsible solar development on underutilized land that we own, and this would provide the YMCA with needed revenue to support our robust community programming. This development would preserve the footprint of the Coeset neighborhood, maintain community access to safe walking trails, and protect the community against overdevelopment, sprawl, and congestion. In recent months, we have been approached by a large out-of-state developer interested in building an access road to support and accelerate a large-scale residential department to our east. The YMCA's clear preference is to proceed with ISM Solar project and protect the local neighborhood from overdevelopment. However, if the solar project does not move forward, the YMCA will be forced to consider alternative development proposals, which are more likely to require heavy construction and blasting that would take several years. This would place a heavy burden on the local neighbors while development is ongoing. This will likely require construction of new main road connecting Centerville Road, Route 117, and Coeset Road. The Greater Providence YMCA is strongly supportive of the state's commitment to achieve 100% renewable electricity by 2030. In 2019, we enrolled in a net metering program and have reinvested savings in energy efficiency incentives to reduce our carbon footprint. As a state and local community, we must embrace the diverse portfolio of renewable options, including solar. We strategically reviewed the possibilities, including our own Y Village, on some of the 115 acres of our property, but our Board of Directors felt strongly that utilizing solar was the best use of the land and would create the least number of issues for the neighbors as well as the City of Warwick. I personally appreciate the thoroughness and transparency. I respectfully ask that you take time to consider all factors by taking a vote that could have potentially devastating unintended consequences for the long-term preservation of undeveloped land. I hope to host you in the near future for a walking tour of the proposed solar project and an update on the Kent County YMCA programs and services for the local community. Please don't hesitate to contact me or any member of my team if you have any questions about the YMCA's position. The developer he's talking about is the Flatley Company. Steve, Colonel O'Donnell disclosed that in a community meeting several weeks ago. They mean business, they're serious, and the problem with what's happening and why I talked about democracy is if anybody asked me, would I rather have solar or trees in my backyard? Of course, I'm going to say I want trees. No doubt about it. The problem is trees aren't an option. The Flatley Company has prepared a proposal for over 200 apartment buildings that would be comparable to what you already see in Sparrow's Point. Does that belong in Coeset? You have an opportunity here to create a situation where you can have an alternative, because that's just the tip of the iceberg. In between that development and Coeset Ave is Blue Ridge Road. That road gets turned into a through street as the Beagle Club decides to develop their property, because they feel they have no other option. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tony Rodrick, who's the president of the Little Roadie Beagle Club.
One second, sir. Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do ask my colleagues, this is just something I'd like to clarify without going into great detail. However, the previous speaker, what was your name, please? Mister? I'm sorry, in the microphone? Thank you. I did not appreciate you coming into this chamber, where we have citizens in a democracy speaking and having a voice on something that's written. I especially didn't like the fact that you compared us to a country that is currently invading and killing and bombing innocent civilians. So you can smirk, you can smirk and smile all you want, your comments will pour. And quite honestly, you lost all integrity with me by making that kind of comment. Shame on you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Just please identify yourself for the record.
Okay, my name is Tony Rodrick, 821 Coeset Road in Warwick. I'm the president of the Little Roadie Beagle Club. Our organization has been with the Warwick community for generations, and we own one of the only remaining undeveloped tracts of land in Coeset. For several years, we have been trying to work with ISM Solar and city officials on a proposal for solar development, which would provide the club with funds to maintain the operation for our last remaining members. Our last remaining members, we have less than 20. I am one of the youngest of five, and I'm 75. It would ensure that the club's land would be donated in its entirety to the City of Warwick for future conservation when the club is dissolved and the solar array has reached the end of its usefulness. The solar array will take up approximately 30 acres of the 100 acres that we have. The remaining 70 acres will not be under solar, and we're proposing, by the membership, to donate it to Warwick for the use of conservation, walking trails, pet areas that they can, you know, walk their dogs. We're just trying to preserve what's there, because the people of Warwick deserve it. They don't deserve to look at all these houses that's just going to happen, because we have no alternative. You realize how many houses we can put in 100 acres with storage at our disposal? The developers will build hundreds of densely packed, single-family homes, bringing sprawl and congestion to the quiet, Coeset neighborhood. That will create an environmental problem, increased city spending, and additional city services, schools, fire, police, and permanently change the footprint of a small community and tranquil to the Coeset neighborhood. Greg Lucini and others can speak in more detail about how the solar can be a tool for a long-term land-use planning. I came tonight to simply state on the record that if we cannot lease our land for responsible solar, the future and preservation will be required to sell it immediately and permanently for residential construction. As I told the city in my recent letter to the planning board, we are not interested in discussing a purchase of land by the city through bonds and other means. Quite honestly, we feel disrespected by the city to have offers to donate our land, and no one wants to listen. We have only the best intentions, as evident by the fact that we were willing to pass on significantly more income if we simply let the land go to development of houses or apartments. We have been waiting for the past three years, and we're getting extremely frustrated. In my closing, I'd like to address the council. We are not trying to destruct this neighborhood, we are trying to help the City of Warwick. This solar will only be a temporary fix as long as the members that are living will be there. Our membership is closed. We don't want the younger generation that wants to come in and destroy the land. We encourage younger people to come in and teach them the rights and wrongs of conservation. We currently work with the Boy Scouts and other organizations, and try to bring them out there and show them what conservation's all about. I truly believe that in the best interest of the city, whereas the land is going to be donated in its entirety, that this solar project would only be temporary. And the majority of the land will probably revert to the City of Warwick in less than 20 years. So I encourage you, when you vote on this, to vote from your heart, because from your heart, it will go to your conscience. The conscience of the board, as far as, did I do the right thing for the City of Warwick? This gentleman just says he enjoys walking his dog through the paths and out through the woods. We're just trying to preserve that. We're not trying to take it away from him, because there'll be more land that he can walk his dogs and enjoy the conservation of the great City of Warwick. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who? Is there anyone who would like to speak against that hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet? Just want to make sure. Is there anyone that wants to speak against that hasn't had an opportunity to speak? Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to tell Mr. Councilman Howe that you're correct. I did not mean what I said to come across that way, I apologize. My intention was strictly to say what happens when people work in a democracy and they don't always have the full information to make a decision. For example, a lot of the things that have been talked about tonight are covered in the alternative solar ordinance that we have proposed. Everything from noise to recycling of solar panels to proper screening, all of those things have been addressed in the solar ordinance as we've written it, including the number of potential properties that this could impact. Because I understand the comments that were made about if you buy a house, you don't want to have, all of a sudden, a solar array show up in your backyard in a place where you didn't anticipate or couldn't possibly be done. I do understand that. That's why the way that the ordinance as we proposed is written provides for only a very few number of possible parcels in the city. And we'd be very interested in talking to each of the councilmen about which potential parcels in your ward that that would impact. Some of the ones that immediately come to play are the Valley Country Club, which would not be included because it's open space, and Rocky Point, again, for the same reasons. The similar types of exemptions, if you will, that will not allow those properties to be developed. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to take the time, there is a solar moratorium in place, it could be extended, take the time to come tour the YMCA and the Beagle Club properties yourself, put your own eyes on it, understand more about how solar development done responsibly can be a tool that you do use to help manage growth in long-term land use planning, and take very seriously what you've heard tonight about the Edward Allen property, the YMCA property, and the Beagle Club property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against PCO 3-22? Anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone at all that would like to speak on 3-22, PCO 3-22? Anyone like to be heard on PCO 3-22?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Paul Baudette, P-E-A-U-D-E-T-T-E. I live at 72 Sawyer Avenue in Potawatomi. I came here tonight to listen to this conversation. I was here earlier in November and spoke as well. I agree that this is a perfect example of democracy. And what I'm about to say is that you have been given two choices to pass or not, and the opposition has, to my reading and my listening to it, has really almost threatened you that do what we say or we're going to destroy the city. But they're conservation organizations. If they are really, truly a conservation organizations, why wouldn't they be considering the best ways to conserve their land, not to sell it? Plus, you have the ability to control the kinds of development that would be proposed. I don't know all the rules and regulations, I don't know all the zoning, but it seems rather challenging to say that you would allow 110 individual homes to go in on a street that is a two-lane road. There are just things that just don't make sense. This ordinance makes sense. This ordinance speaks to what the city needs. It speaks to the fact that there are many areas that large solar panels can be built on, which, by the way, I would wonder whether the city would consider putting solar panels on the top of this building, but that's besides the point. This legislation, this solar ordinance, excuse me, deals with all the problems that were brought up back in October, November. And it sets the rules by which everyone can live, and everyone may need to make some changes, but it's for the benefit of everyone. I encourage you to pass this, I encourage you to support this, and in terms of the legal aspects of it, I truly believe passing the ordinance here and then the, this particular ordinance, the comprehensive plan first and then the ordinance, is a very logical and the correct process to do. And so with that, I will say that please pass this ordinance. I think from what I've heard today, people have worked hard on it, people have shown that they're willing to work for the City of Warwick and that this is a good step, and it will be, from my experience in the environmental community over 30 years. I do know that Warwick is being looked at as a model, and the strength of this piece of ordinance will be incredible across the state, and I have to wonder whether some people are worried about that. So thank you very much. And if I can just put one other non-solar issue out to you that you probably are aware of, I would guess, the solar ordinance will help on climate change, but one issue that the city has to address is sea level rise relative to the septic systems and areas that we have. I know it's not part of the ordinance, but I don't come here very often, I don't get a shot to tell you this, so thank you very much for bearing with me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this that hasn't had an opportunity to speak? Is there anyone that hasn't had an opportunity to speak? Okay, I ask, this is the second time I ask that you be very brief.
I will be brief. Again, for the record, Michael Syaram, 139 North Hampton Street, Warwick, Rhode Island. The categories tonight were those in favor, those opposed, and the third category is kind of neither, which is, when I'm up at the microphone, again, to just make some additional comments. Again, I want to commend everybody on the city council, the planning department, the planning board, for getting what the people want where it is this evening. Earlier, Mr. McAllister mentioned that we weren't going to talk about specific projects, yet a developer was allowed to come up and speak about specific projects while the public was not, and I just want to make a few follow-on comments, not about a specific project, but just in general, the comments that were made by a commenter before me, that they felt that the city had not done its due diligence, and I firmly disagree with that. I feel that Mr. Kravitz, I feel that the planning board, with its wealth of experience, people on the planning board that used to be at statewide planning, all the people here from the community have diligently looked at these issues for a year to get where we are this evening, and would ask that, I was basically asked that PCO 3-22 not be continued, and it'd be first passage this evening. I also disagree with the former commenters' suggestions that the city is going to get open space and for everybody's benefit. I want to share the knowledge that what they wanted to do was not allowed by current zoning. They tried to go through the master plan process, through the master plan process, it hit a roadblock.
Okay, sir, thank you, thank you very much.
I will finish. The roadblock was that they did not want to give it a certain...
Thank you very much, sir, if we can have the next speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Nathan Cornell. So first off, I would like to thank Councilman Howe for his comments regarding ISM's comments. You're right on point, and thank you very much for saying that. And the second thing, like, there's this talk of, like, land donations, but the land is worthless if it's contaminated, and that will happen if there's solar on those areas. So those areas will just be worthless, and it would take a lot of money to decontaminate those areas. The next thing regarding ISM's comments with regarding housing development, they've been using this over and over again with the residents...
Sir, sir, you have to slow down, she has to type what you're saying.
I understand. So regarding ISM's comments regarding, like, housing developments as alternative, like, that's just a scare tactic that ISM has been using consistently with residences around the YMCA and Beagle Club, and I think it's quite disgraceful that they're threatening the residents. It shows that they could care less about this community, and I urge your council to complete, to go forward with the ordinance as it is, because ISM's proposals are just to benefit themselves, and they've made that abundantly clear tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Barbara Walsh, Ward 2. Sounds to me, what? Sorry, got to get lined up, I guess. Sounds to me like you were threatened tonight. I don't think that was fair to you. You have done your due diligence. If you wanted to walk properties, you would have. You've been given notice in the same degree we've all been given notice of each point along this process that has occurred. The fact is, the same technique, and this is just technique, was used at the planning board, threatened them as well. And what they managed to do was get a one-month delay in the decision of the planning board. But thankfully, those members didn't fall for the threats that were exerted against them by either ISM, the planning board, I mean, the Beagle Club letter and the Steve O'Donnell letter that was presented to the planning board. I resent that. This is a group that is saying to you, if you don't give us what we want and you do the opposite, which is what some of the citizens want, you're going to have these dire consequences. Well, we don't know what the consequences will be of any action you take. Anything could happen. And basically, you're in charge of what those consequences will be down the road anyway. You're going to have to vote on whether there are lots of houses built or maybe no houses built, whether ledges blasted or whether it can't be blasted. Those are not consequences of the vote you take tonight. They are possibilities, and there are other possibilities as well. If the Beagle Club wants help in paying their bills, and they're so concerned about conservation, they could do an easement, which would allay a lot of the taxes they may be paying.
Again, Ms. Walsh, we just want to keep it to PCO 3-22, your position on this zoning.
Well, the zoning gives them options right now that were not the ones presented to you tonight. So I would ask that you consider in full the totality of what may or may not happen if you pass or don't pass this bill, and don't succumb to these kind of threats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on PCO 3-22? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on 3-22? Before we move out of, I'm going to ask for a motion to move out of a public hearing, I would like the director to come back up for a second. We do, I'm going to have the solicitor speak, we do have a couple of grammatical errors that we want to address, but we're going to keep the public hearing open, so we can discuss that. Go ahead, Solicitor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Director. Director, two items that may be of consideration to the council for grammatical fixes only, and I just want your input on the record here during public hearing. On page three, line 20, at the end of the sentence following the number one, the first, the word that appears there is "and," A-N-D. I believe it should read "an," A-N. Is that something that is a grammatical fix the council would consider?
That's correct.
And on page four, line 39, at the end of the sentence following the period, there is a backslash, is that something that's appropriate for deletion?
Correct.
And would these things be consistent with the recommendations as made by the planning board?
Yes.
That is all, thank you.
So just to clear that up, the two things that we were looking for a motion was, is to change the word "and" to "an," and eliminate a backslash. Is anyone on the council would like to, well, first? Okay. First, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Councilman Lattner, sir.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, by Councilman Gephardt, Councilman Howe, Councilman Ricks, Councilman McElroy, and Councilman Foley. Okay, anyone like to make an amendment at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor, I'm closing the public hearing. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a council member that would like to make a motion on those amendments that were just mentioned? Councilman Lattner, sir.
Make a motion to approve the two amendments that were read into the record by Council Solicitor Walsh.
Second, by Councilman Gephardt, Councilman Howe, and Councilman Ricks. Are there any questions on the proposed amendments? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll for favorable action on the amendment. Yes.
Mr. Foley, Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattner?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Seven yes to amend.
Okay, the amendment, PCO 3-22 has now been amended. Are there any questions on PCO 3-22 as amended? Any questions from members of the council, any statements from members of the council? Councilman Gephardt.
I just wanted to make, thank you, Council President, I just wanted to make a brief comment, you know, there's, in some of what we heard in public testimony, in opposition, you know, there's this looming threat of dense, is repeated development of the sites that are, that this ordinance would restrict development of, and that certainly is a tool that is used to give all of us pause. If, so I just was reflecting quickly on what the zoning is, in the current zoning in those, in those areas on GIS. So all of the properties that were discussed tonight are zoned A15. If you're not familiar, the city has four residential zoning types, A40 being the least dense, A15 being the second least dense, and then on to A10 and A7. So all of the parcels that were mentioned tonight are of that second category, A15 being the second least dense. So I just, you know, anyone who may have taken a moment to consider what Coeset Road would look like with these, you know, dense apartment building, you know, tightly packed neighborhoods, I, in order for that to actually happen, there would be a whole nother process, which we would need all of you for, right? But by right, that is not allowed. It would not be allowed, and I have the confidence that this council would make sure, as we have and planned to tonight, that the neighborhoods stay within the character of the neighborhoods and would listen to the input of the residents were that to come up, so. That's all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lattner, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So we've heard a lot of testimony this evening. We've heard on at least two occasions about what's legal and what's illegal. This councilman will reside, will resign on the fact that our city councillor has reviewed this, and our city attorneys have reviewed this. It was interesting to hear the current letter that was read into the record this evening from Mr. O'Donnell. The tonality was certainly different than the one I heard at the planning board, quite Be interesting to hear that letter read before this city council and before the members of the public. Bring the housing on, bring it on. Because you have 38 acres of property, that doesn't mean you have 30 acres of buildable property. I didn't hear any comments about that. There are DEM restrictions for building near or adjacent, certainly on wetlands. There's a whole lot of setbacks. There's a whole lot of setbacks. To say, for at least the second time in my presence, that if you don't want solar, you're gonna get housing. At the planning board meeting, it was, you're gonna get affordable housing. Really? I find that interesting as it comes from the source. I thought that was a big, important part of what some groups do. Housing pays taxes. To say that we're going to flood these properties with houses and housing, that's not a deterrent to me. There's communities in the city of Warwick that are paying upwards of $1 million a year in property taxes, and they may have one or two families with youngsters. So I don't want to hear about houses is gonna increase our cost of schools. Let that take care of itself all on its own. There's no trade-off for this person between houses, affordable houses, and solar. And that's why I'll be supporting this item. There's places for it, and that's fine. And this ordinance will allow that, and it'll occur. But then there's places that they don't belong. And I've heard somebody mention Rocky Point. You want to get me out of my chair quick, mention Rocky Point. Because it ain't happening in Rocky Point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lattner, sir. Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. One of the comments that I heard tonight is that if there were housing put in on some of those different sites that my colleague from Ward Nine alluded to, then the member of the public was under the impression that it would come back to the city council. But with those sites being zoned A-15 by right, that means that to the extent that the sites are buildable or could be made buildable, then generally speaking, a residential development would go in front of the planning board, wouldn't necessarily come in front of the zoning board or in front of the city council for approval of the subdivision. But I think that the greater underlying point here is that I think that houses are good. Call me crazy, but it seems to me with the rising housing prices that we kinda need more houses in Warwick. And so my only disappointment is that our zoning on, across much of the city, is not more similar to the zoning up in Ward Two where we have the A-7 zoning, the most dense zoning, if you will. And frankly, I like that. I like living in neighborhood where you have single-family houses and duplexes, and you even have some larger houses, too. It's a wonderful neighborhood that I live in, in the Norwood neighborhood. And so I guess that the one disappointment that I would have is that if it's gonna be housing, well, 15,000 square foot per house, I guess those are some big yards. I'm more of a fan of put those houses in there instead of put huge swaths of grass in there. But, you know, if it is 110 houses, then that's 110 more families here in Warwick.
Any other questions? Councilman Gephardt.
I'd like to make a motion for favorable action.
As amended?
As amended.
Second by Councilman Lattner, sir. Second by Councilman Foley, Councilman Howe, Councilman McElroy, and Councilman Ricks. Are there any questions or additional comments? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAlister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattner?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Seven yeses, PCO 3-22 passes, first passage. Councilman Howe, can I have a motion for a five-minute recess? I move for a five-minute recess. Second by Councilman Foley. All is in favor? Aye. We're in recess. We do have some more council business to attend to. Sargent of the arms, we're gonna get, move on with the council meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We will, now, we're going back onto the agenda. We have done the roll call, we've done salute to the flags. Excuse me, everyone, we do have to finish a meeting. We have done general communications, we have done executive communications, we have done acceptance of the minutes, we have done all the appointments. So now we are now down to number three, the consent calendar, PCR 31-22, Committee Report, Finance.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. Councilman Gephardt and Councilman Lattner, sir. If we could just have quiet in the chambers, please.
One. People.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bid 2022-317 NEPTU Cold Water Meters. Bid 2022-352 Horizon Event Management Software. Bid 2022-340 Solar Winds Network Management Software. Bid 2022-341 Annual Shields Suit Software. Bid 2022-353 Calebright Seminar and Training. Bid 2022-345 Repair to Boiler Holden. Bid 2021-283 Alpha Bravo Fire Apparatus Repairs. Bid 2022-270 Charlie Original Equipment Manufacture Parts for Various Vehicles. Bid 2022-356 Five-Year Rate Study. That is the consent calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are there any questions on the consent calendar that wasn't asked during the Finance Committee meeting earlier this evening? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattner?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Next up, we've already done PCO 2-22, and we have done PCO 3-22, so we are now under unfinished business on the agenda. First up is PCR 28-22, 2022-3